Welcome everybody to the July Amherst County School Board meeting. Before we have a moment of silence, is there anything you can start with? Okay, so if we could stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ... one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board, 1.02, I get approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Dr. Wells, we have an agenda.
Thank you, sir.
So, we have two people who have signed up to speak for public comments, so when I call your name, if you could come forward, state your name and your address or your voting district. Stephanie Smith.
Hello? Stephanie Smith.
Would you pull that mic down so that somebody really tall was there?
Obviously. Stephanie Smith, I vote at Manellison, so I'm not sure what district that is. I do have some concerns. Never been here before, so please bear with me. So, you want my address, correct?
Yeah, if could, please.
Okay, I live at 495 Woodland Drive, Madison Heights, right behind Walmart. If anybody wants to come help me pick weeds, I will be glad to put you to work, because I have a lot. I typed up what I need to say, just because it's just three concerns, and I just want to make sure that I make my point. It's not really that big of a deal, but it's kind of important, summer school. The schedule for summer school is great. It's like, great schedule, three weeks, in and out, perfect. It just doesn't work for the camps. So, there's some camps that are offered for, that are free. One is through the rec department. There was an art and music camp that was offered through Donna Meeks that was about $25, which was a great opportunity and exposure for young kids. Perfect. However, it's during summer school. So, what happens to the kids that need the summer school for SOLs or the kids that need, like, that extra push just to get them to where they need to be? Of course, I had to put on my superwoman cape. I had to drive all the way up here to Amherst, do the camp, then get them all the way back to Madison Heights to do school. So, he was missing the important math and reading in the mornings, but then he got the activities in the evenings. So, I'm just suggesting that if we're going to do these camps that are being offered, maybe switch the times, have them a little bit later or earlier, I don't know. I get the logistics, I understand all that, but it's just interfering because I didn't mind, but I'm sure there's other parents that, you know, like, I have to pick and choose. Why do we have to pick and choose? Like, why can't he do both? We can do it during the school year, why can't we do it during the summer too? So, that's just my first concern. My second concern is the calendar. I understand that you posted online, I understand that you posted on social media, I understand that it's on ClassDojo, I get that. But what about the people that don't have the internet? When he went to kindergarten, my son, it was shoved down my throat, what day school started, what day we were out for snow, everything I knew. Now, I had to beg, when do schools start? I'm a planner, I like to have my calendar ready for six months in advance. I don't know anything, I can't figure out stuff, I don't know what's going on. What about the other people that don't have access to all of these things? So, I just wonder, like, am I missing something? What's going on? Like, where is it available? You know, why do I have to hunt for it? Are we saving a tree? What's going on? Like, I just don't know. Which brings me to my third point. So, my son went to summer school this summer. An incident happened at school on June 27th with another student. My son told me about it on that Sunday. Because I was notified on Saturday before summer school started, I called the number that was left on my voicemail and spoke to the lady that was acting as the principal of the summer school program. Her response was she knew about the incident and had spoke with my son and the other student and would address it on Monday. She sent my son to the nurse, however, this incident was before dismissal. The nurse said that he was fine, he was put on the bus and sent home. He told me about the incident. The school never called me, they never notified me or anything. He was kicked in the stomach. The little girl took her foot off the ground and kicked him in the stomach. She kicked him hard enough for him to cry. So, you can imagine that she kicked him hard enough to make him cry. They had time enough to take him to the nurse, they had time enough for the nurse to check him out, they had time enough to put him on the bus, but no one ever called me. I had to call her. When I called her, and she did call me back on Monday, by this time, of course, I'm angry, but I didn't say anything. The problem with this is, if he had did it to her, how would that story have played out? If my son had put his hands or his feet on this little girl, what would the story have been different? How would, what would the reaction been? What would the consequences been? Who would have been called, who wouldn't have been called? She did apologize for not telling me. She said, "I own it," you know, whatever. I don't care about all that, because that's not the point. The issue with it was, we were already having a problem and he had to go to the doctor, and when we were in the doctor, the doctor said, "Has anything happened?" I'm like, "Nah, everything's fine." It wasn't, but I didn't know about it. What is the policy concerning if another child puts their hands on my child and I'm not notified? That's all that I wanted to know.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next speaker is Mr. Porter. There you are.
My name is Jeff Porter, 478 Woody's Lake Road, Madison Heights, Virginia. I have one statement to make and then an expression of appreciation. I understand that Verizon is going to be making a presentation about the cellphone tower. I knew this was coming, and I've been curious about this, because I really haven't heard from you as a school board, as members, or from the school district, why we're even talking about having a cellphone tower on school property. And so, I'm curious tonight to hear, first of all, the presentation. I always want to learn, I want to find out things. But I'm also curious, because I just haven't heard anyone really talk about why this has come to this point where we're considering having a cellphone tower. If it's for the school district, then I'm curious to know what the rationale is. So, I'm looking forward to hearing some answers tonight and to hearing from you as well. The comment that I have to make is, one of my friends is a janitor in one of your schools, and I understand that you all are doing repainting in the schools. And it's good to hear about doing maintenance that's ongoing. Oftentimes, that's allowed to slide because of budget issues or whatever. So, I'm glad that you, as a school district and as a school board, are trying to keep our property up and looking well. Thank you very much for your time, looking forward to hearing some answers tonight.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, those are the only two who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to approach the board? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to 3.0. Consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Since you approved the consent agenda tonight, you approved Ms. Jasmine Glaze to be the new assistant principal at Amalon Elementary School. We'd like to recognize Jasmine. Little bit of a bio. She began her career at ACPS in 2015 as a long-term sub in biology at the high school. She served as an instructional assistant during the 15-16 school year and was hired as a full-time biology teacher in 2016. From 2016 to 2021, she taught a variety of science courses at the high school. In 2021, she transitioned to higher education, serving as lead learning specialist at Liberty University. She returned to ACPS in August of '23 as a biology teacher and intervention and support team chair. Shortly thereafter, she was named the school climate community grant coordinator for the division. She has contributed to ACPS as a cheer coach, assistant volleyball coach, member of the recruiting committee, and a member of the school improvement team representing Amherst Education Center. We're pleased to welcome Jasmine to Amalon Elementary School and look forward to her leadership in the year ahead. Thank you, Jasmine.
Anything you want to say?
I'd like to say, as an Amherst native, I'm really honored to serve in this role and be able to serve my elementary school in this capacity. So, thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
4.0, Dr. Wells?
4.01, we have administrative, we'll turn it over to Dr. Hoden and Mr. Roaks.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Lots of information tonight on some construction. Before I turn it over, Mr. Roaks, just a couple other things, I don't have pictures for this, because it just started, but the lecture hall has undergone quite a facelift, new painting, and the carpet is finished in there. The new seats will be installed, if not the end of next week, the beginning of the following week, so that will be a nice addition. We'll have pictures for you at the next meeting. The library was just finished today, that was painted and carpeted, and LVT was laid in there, and the new furniture will be delivered next week. So, again, we'll have some pictures for that. So, that is, that is some great news. They're finishing the windows, they have two more schools to finish for that, and then all the exterior doors that we're doing are, have been completed. So, lots going on, and as Mr. Porter noted, painting is just about finished at, down at Manellison, and then they moved on to Amherst Middle, and then will also start some paving. So, there are lots of projects going on this summer. One thing I want to say before Mr. Roaks goes, just to let you know that there have been some setbacks with construction. There is a possibility that we will not have a kitchen when school starts for the first week or two. However, we've talked to Kim, and there is a contingency plan in case that that's not ready to go. So, running to really, some of the 1950 construction has been quite interesting, when we've peeled the onion back, found some beams that weren't complete, and then, of course, we had to do some abatement, and Mr. Roaks can share a few other things with that. But just to let you know, if that is, does come to fruition, that we already have a contingency plan. We've talked to Kim and Mr. Crawford, and we have a plan for that, for the short term that that would, that would happen. Questions on any of that before I turn it over to Mr. Roaks?
Board, any questions? Okay. Mr. Roaks, go ahead.
All right. All is left in slideshow. So, updated picture, got the signs in front of the school there, the letters, the rest of that hopefully will be coming next week. As you can see in this picture, we've had to, we're in the process of redoing the front entranceway due to some issues with the concrete that had poor concrete finish on them, and we rejected that pad, so they're going to redo that. This is inside the cafeteria. We've had the tables and chairs for quite some time now, and they set them up this week, just to get things laid out a little bit, and we'll readdress those and make room for the new students in the new year for the cafeteria. Just a different look, looking down the counter spot, counter space area and across the cafeteria there as well. New bathroom, we've seen that multiple times before, and looking down Main Street with a really completely finished, the glassware for the trophy cases, display cases should be in late this week or first part of next week, and the rest of the finishes down the hallway are pretty much done now. Inside the auditorium, not a lot of changes inside the auditorium. You know, from last month, they had finished the cap work, and we've got that stain, you see now the steps on both sides of the stage. They still got those pretty construction steps right in the middle, they haven't taken out yet, they're, they're a free gift to us. So, the steps are done, and we're still working on some issues with lighting on the hour lights, and that's why you see that the carpet's not in place yet. As we move into phase two, as Dr. Hoden mentioned, there's some questions regarding the cafeteria. To orient you a little bit to where these pictures are taken, I'm standing in the old cafeteria part on the left picture, looking back toward the old kitchen. So, that back wall you see in the back picture with the scaffolding in front of it, that's actually support brackets holding up the structure. Where we need to put some lemons in, waiting for more steel beams, as he mentioned earlier. And so, right here on the right picture is in the old kitchen area as well. So, we're actually where that little mini hoe is sitting in those pictures, that is going to be the new serving area, you know, for the new cafeteria part. The picture on the left and right is actually, I'm standing inside the new freezer, which is probably about twice as big as the old, the two old existing freezers combined. So, the freezer walls are up in place. And the right picture, if you look at top there, above the shiny white end down there, you'll see a horizontal piece going across, that's the roof of the freezer going in, and I haven't been in that a day, but been outside in the mud most of the day there. So, anyway, freezer work's going on, all the kitchen equipment is there, they're just in the process of installing it, and again, getting some things lined up in the floor, so it's still a lot of work to be done. Picture on the left is looking at the new bathroom in the, across from the old auxiliary gym. This is looking into the bathroom from the hallway, as is the right picture. You can also see the darkness in the floor there, that we've removed all the tile, and from that point all the way up to basically the main lobby part of the existing old auditorium, all the tile has been removed, and again, the floor below that contains asbestos, so all that's been mitigated as well. Picture on the left and right is some of the classroom, picture on the left is one of the classrooms up front that used to be in the old cafeteria. And the picture on the right is actually, I'm standing in the corner, looking at two new hallways that have been built. Going to the left side of the picture is going toward the CTE wing, and that wall that you're looking at through the breaks down there is actually the outside wall of the old auditorium. Going to the right, you're going up that hallway, that's the hall that leads down from the front of the school to the back toward the old cafeteria and gymnasium area. So, just sort of try to get you acclimated to where you are. Looking at the 90-degree angle right there, that's a classroom there, there's one to the left, and there's two behind me on the wall behind me. Again, and actually, some of the wall's been primed, and like, the first coat of paint been put on those in the hallways, and we just got to hang some sheet rock in it. All the mechanical electrical and that type of work has been done, except for hanging the likes and the finished dark work, so they're sort of working their way from that point out, and, but these classes should be ready for the beginning of school year. Some things, fun things at the fieldhouse. Ones on the left are the drainage ditch that we put in, the tie in the roof leaders and the gutters, that will be all piped into that, and then that water will be gone off, you know, off-site down through the drainage system to get it away from the building. And then the picture on the right, during one of our fabulous storms that we've had on north end of the county here in recent weeks, and this is about two weeks ago, came here, and that's what we found to our meter box, brand spanking new meter box. It's hard to see, but the debris you see on the ground is what used to be the meter. And so, anyway, actually, we just got that power turned back on this meeting, this morning, put in new meter box, new meter. Fortunately, the wiring from the transformer up to this point was good. We did rewire everything from the meter box back inside to the panel. From what we can tell so far, there's no damage to any equipment, anything inside there, and the damage did not, does not appear to have extended past the outside of the meter box here. And then we've got sidewalk report at the fieldhouse.
Do we know what caused that?
Lightning.
Lightning, okay.
I actually have contacted National Weather Service, you know, going back to my prior life, used to do some structural fires, contact National Weather Service, they have a mapping system, and they can show me maps of where lightning strikes happen in the area. We actually had one down here in the end of, near Briar Patch. So, it was that, or power surge, because again, it did not go into the structure, and so it came up through the line, everything, the APCO, talking to them. Everybody's fairly confident it was the result of a lightning strike. But one thing about this, since we have not taken ownership of the building, we do not have a C O. The question asked, we all complied to our insurance. And the question was absolutely not. So, we don't own it. It's on our property, but it's under construction. So. Anyway, sidewalks are poured. And around the fieldhouse, again, we've had to do some, we're working on the grade work and parking area behind the school. And that's taken priority over top of the grade work here. So, that is where we're at. Next step's complete phase one, pave the parking lot, continue the kitchen classrooms in phase two, and complete site work at the fieldhouse.
Board, any questions? Yes, sir.
So, I did want to go back to what you were talking about, Tim, with the delay for the kitchen and stuff. The unexpected changes or things that weren't right. I'm assuming we're doing change orders for that type of work?
Yes.
And what's that doing to our budget? Like, how much is this costing? Well, the abatement's hurting. And where are we getting the funding for that? We had some reserves for that. Could we get an update of the accounting for the project at the next meeting, please? Yeah, we can do that for you. Yep. And then, yeah, the abatement for that. And then, some beams that had to be added because I'll show you some pictures later of how they finished it in 1950. That was... Yeah, you showed those to me the other week. And part of the issue too, when they did the renovation in 1990, what they redid the kitchen, the cafeteria, the dining area there, they didn't abate some of the areas. They just did the areas they had to abate. And so, when we dug into it, we found asbestos that we didn't anticipate finding because it should have been abated in 1990. However, it wasn't. And therefore, when we hit it, we had to get it abated to do it right. We didn't want to go forward. And in 30 years, somebody come back and ask, what world are y'all thinking? You didn't take care of this the right way. So, we're fixing it the right way. We wanted to make sure we did it right this time.
Yeah, I agree with doing it the right way.
So, that's, yeah, some of that, as you know, takes time with the abatement. Just surprisingly, in 90, they laid the tiles over the old tiles. And they didn't take them up. So, not sure why that happened, but it did. So, again.
Yeah, save money.
Save your money.
You don't mess with the asbestos. You don't have to deal with taking it up at that time.
Yeah, that time. But yeah, we wanted to make sure we did it right this time. So.
Thank you, sir. And Board, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
And just a quick note, if any of you, you know, want to do a quick walkthrough, just let Gary or I know. And we'll be glad to take you through. It's pretty exciting and lots of interesting things going on in there.
Okay, all right. Next, we have the cell phone tower. And Nathan is here, so I'll invite him up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Nate Holland. I represent Verizon Wireless. We were here a couple months ago talking about the possibility of leasing some space at Manellison Middle School to put up a tower. Between that time and now, our engineer has visited the facility, has provided an exhibit, which I can, will show you. And we've also presented the school board or the administration with a lease draft. And we've discussed that with the school board attorney. And so, there's been somewhat consensus on the agreement. And so, at this point, I just wanted to kind of give you an update and then talk about the next steps, kind of which we need to discuss, which I need some input from you all on how to proceed. So, we're looking at the tax map here. I think I presented this last time. We're showing the school. And then, the tower location would be about 800 feet towards the rear of the property in the wooded area behind the existing baseball field. So, this is the exhibit drawing that our engineer came up with. Basically, shows what I showed you previously, the location of the access road, which, is there a pointer on here, is along this dotted line. So, part of this access, there is a gate. And there is a somewhat paved access which stops at some point. So, we'll follow that access and bring it all the way back towards the rear of the property and to the square spot, which is, that would be the lease area and the tower location. So, this kind of talks about the next steps. What we'd be looking at is Verizon would perform the onsite visit with our civil engineer, which we had done. That is complete. We provided a lease document for review by county staff and county attorney. That is complete. And we are, you know, fairly close to a final agreement. The next step, which would be, whoops, let's go back. I screwed that up. Which would be number three, is you all had talked about wanting to complete a community meeting with the folks around, in the neighborhood around the school. And so, also, part of that is for the county's administrative review process for our application with our use permit, we are required to do a balloon test. And so, we fly a balloon, height of the tower. Couple hours, people can come out and view it. And that gives folks an idea of where they'll be able to seat a balloon. So, typically, we do the balloon test in the mornings. Usually, the mornings are the best time of day to fly the balloons. You usually have less winds. You know, we try to look at forecast and, you know, try to determine ahead of time what the winds will be. Sometimes, those forecasts are right. Sometimes, they're not. You all had mentioned holding the community meeting. We can definitely do that. We can schedule it around however you all feel that you need to want folks to be able to come out. I don't know if having a balloon test in the evening is the best time of day. Usually, there's more winds in the evening, late afternoon. But we can definitely schedule that. We can schedule it on the same day. We might, you know, depending on the weather, might follow up our plans. So, wanted just to present that at this point and, you know, see how you all feel about proceeding.
Board, any questions, comments right now? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. So, one of my questions on your flyer there is it says that both Verizon and school board have provided comments. I don't recall the school board giving comments.
Yeah.
Does that mean the lawyers?
Yes, yes. That's what I meant by that. And I'm...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I can just say that for myself, there is a lot of controversy around cell towers. You have Montgomery County, Maryland schools no longer allow cell towers. Prince George County, Maryland Board of Education didn't renew their cell tower. Portland, Oregon schools ended all their new leases with cell towers. The Southern Elementary School Local School Council in Illinois voted against this. San Jose, lots of school districts are voting against this. And I don't think it's because they're all agreed that it's a bad thing. I think it's because there is not agreement that it's a good thing. And when you're putting it on school property that has compulsory requirements for children to attend, I think it comes into an ethical place. That's why, to me, it is so critical that prior to the board saying, oh, sure, let's send this to the county. We need to have a community meeting that gets a lot of press, so everyone knows. So, people aren't saying, I didn't know. Well, I know it was on the school board website, but I didn't get a paper. I didn't see a press conference. I didn't hear W S E T. S E T., I think that's correct.
Correct.
Thank you. And so, for myself, that really concerns me. The school can't, from an ethical perspective, you know, if you go to the health site, there's potential headaches, school disturbances. You've got places in Europe that aren't even allowing Wi-Fi in their schools because it's impacting the mental and physical health of children. So, that is my perspective as just one person.
Okay. Board, anybody else?
Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
So, could you bring up the map of the school again, please?
The aerial.
Yeah, the aerial shot right there. Okay. So, that's basically going to be almost right in my front yard. That'll be 800 feet from the school. I'm pretty sure.
Eight hundred yards, actually.
Eight hundred yards?
Correct.
Okay. Now, where is the nearest cell tower in reference to that one? It's right across the street from 29, right at the end of, where is it? It's right where 84 lumber is. There's a tower right there. I wonder how close that is to yardage. Does anybody want to try to give a guess? Say, within 1,000 yards, probably, of the school? More than that?
More than that.
More than 1,000 yards?
Yes, sir.
I know I lose service coming down Woody's Lake Road, for sure. And I'm just trying to figure out what Verizon's advantage is to putting a cell tower there.
Yeah, why was it chosen?
Yeah, why was that location chosen? I mean, I'm sure it wasn't for the residents on Woody's Lake Road.
So, there's a lot that goes into deciding where these are located. They look at their existing locations that they have, cell site locations. Those could be on a tower. Those could be on a water tank. This could be on a high-tension tower. They sometimes use those, the public utility towers. So, the engineer looks at where their other locations are at. They look at where they're having issues with coverage, where they're having issues with service. Is there a cell site that is existing site that is having, gets so much use that it's not working properly? There's a lot involved in that. And so, I mean, you sometimes think of it like as a puzzle. They don't want sites too close together. They don't want sites too far apart. So, I don't have the map in front of me of their other sites at this point. But in my mind, is what I'm thinking, is that they decided that this location works best to fit within that puzzle.
Okay.
And it's an area that needs some service. I know there was a mentioning of needing service behind or at the Walmart, which is nearby.
Correct.
They're probably, they may have gotten complaints from folks that live in the neighborhood behind the school. Maybe there's a lack of service. I can get that information, that data from my engineer. I just don't have that at this point.
I just have one more question. How many other schools have Verizon towers on their property in the state of Virginia? Do you happen to know that number?
I don't know the number. I could try to find that. I know that there's, from off the top of my head, the city of Newport News, Amal County. I know those two in particular. I don't know, I'd have to get that data directly from Verizon and see.
Right, yeah, I'd like to know.
I know there's several. There's several that either on their rooftops or have towers, you know, next on their property at some point.
Right.
Okay. Board, any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have just a few. What is the proposed height of this tower?
We would be looking at 195-foot monopole tower, which is, I think I have a picture. That is a monopole tower. Single-pole tower, no guide wires. Some of the towers you see look like they have three legs. They kind of look like the Eiffel Tower. Those are called self-support towers. In this case, this would be a monopole tower. It's a single foundation and would have the equipment mounted up at the top of the tower.
Given that height, how far would the cell coverage of this tower reach? Would it reach Walmart? How many neighborhoods?
I don't have the exact, you know, like the exact number. But typically, what they tell us is a mile, mile and a half. In somewhat urban areas and rural areas, it could be a little bit more, be a little bit less. A lot of it depends on topography, you know, how much, what they call clutter, trees, buildings. All sorts of things go into determining, you know, how far that coverage can propagate. But usually, a mile and a half to two miles is the typical average distance of these cell sites. Some could be more. Some could be like, if it's up on a mountain, may get a little bit more spread out than you would in...
Well, I'm trying to address just this one particular one. And I know that Mr. Rossi had some questions. I've asked a couple of questions. And your response, you know, was that you don't have that information. Prior to any public meeting that we have with the community, I would like to ask that you get those answers to those questions so that we don't have to look at the public
Sure.
and say, I don't have that information.
Sure.
We need to be anticipating anything they may be asking. And one of them would be, you know, how far is the reach of this cell service going to be? Because I know for me, and we had a citizen who asked why we were looking at this. For me personally, I didn't want to take it upon myself just to say, no. If this is something that the community wanted, if it's something that the community needed, I felt like the community needed a voice in that. So, for me, I think being able for you to say to the public, this is what we want to do, 195-foot monopole tower, and this is how far it's going to reach. These are the neighborhoods that would benefit from it and how they would benefit. I know sometimes it is coverage. Sometimes, it's additional data. So, I think those questions or those answers would be vital to be able to say to the public, it will reach these neighborhoods. It's not going to provide you any more cell service. It's just going to provide more data coverage. Or maybe it will provide more cell service. So, before, for me, before I go into any kind of an agreement, I want to know that the public is very clear and that they want what you have to offer. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah. Most definitely.
I don't want to sign it or agree to it. For me personally, if we're just going on, this is what we hope it does. Engineers should be able to give you that information.
And I don't know if they, and it's not an exact science. So, they can give you an idea of where the coverage. I don't think they'll definitely say, it'll definitely reach this neighborhood. But they can give us an idea, coverage-wise, what the expectation should be. Because there's, it's not an exact science. They're using modeling data that, you know, is not 100%. So, they're not going to confirm, yes, you will have four bars at this house location. But they'll do their best to say, this is what the expectation for the coverage is.
Right. I mean, to me, they could say, we have coverage in this area, but we have an additional data need. And this is what it's going to give you.
Yeah.
Or if it's coverage, you know, if it's a mile, mile and a half, which neighborhoods is it going to be affected?
Sure.
Is it going to affect the Walmart parking lot? Those kind of things. So...
I definitely think it'll, well, that shouldn't be an issue because Walmart's close enough, but...
So, my other question is back to the site plan for the actual square. Is that at the back end of a baseball field?
It is, if you look here, the baseball field is...
It's right there in front of the trees.
And so, the backstop is pointing in, like, I think, if I remember, in this direction. So, it would be in, it would be in right field, basically, right baseline, basically.
So, if you go back to the other drawing, does that service road encroach on the baseball field?
It, no. We might have to move a fence. There's a fence that's out there that you really can't see in the picture. We'll have to remove just part of that to get the road in. But other than that, we won't affect the use of the field.
Okay, so I see the blue line, which I assume is the property line there to the right of the field.
Correct, correct.
And the service road is going to be within that blue line between it and the baseball field?
Yeah, it'll, we'll try to hug the line as much as possible. But there is a little bit of topography change that we will probably jut out of the field and try to hug that wood line as much as possible.
So, you've got enough space between the baseball field and the property in order to put a road?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Regarding the topography in that area back there...
Regardless of the topography in that area back there, um, it's going to be tight on that side of the fence line, based upon the grade going down the hill there. And he's right, the, the way the baseball field is oriented, that little brown spot you see right below that, I think it's eight hundred yards, I can't see that well, but that's the, uh, the infield right here or right there. And then it faces out toward the houses is where the field is oriented. The fence on the right-hand side, um, as he said, it gets narrower as it goes back. But probably about halfway between the infield and the outfield fence out there, um, you run out of real estate. So, as he mentioned, that fence along the baseball field would have to come down. And, uh, and of course, the, the fence on the outside back there, the fence around the back, backside of the field is probably fifty feet long, but it does not circle the whole field back there. So, and again, from the use of that field, obviously, we as a school division, you know, we don't play any sports on that thing right now. The little league softball and baseball, they will practice back there. But the field is in, you know, shape where there's no games, it's just a practice-type field back there now.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's helpful. So, for moving forward, I think that it's really important for us to have a public meeting. Um, you mentioned the balloon, um, test or flight, whatever you call it.
Yeah.
I think that's important, but I don't know that, for me, that it, it would deter having a public meeting prior to that for us as a board to hear the public's wishes and desires, get information out. Then you can always do a balloon test from my perspective after that, as long as you're giving information to the public. But that would be my opinion, is I think that, I, I don't want the public to think that we are rushing and moving ahead with it without getting their input because for me, that's the most important.
Understand. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
You know, I had asked before, uh, we, you know, Amal Commerce Center is, what did we say, Gary? I think it's a mile.
It's a mile.
As the crow flies. And we don't have cell service in that area. So, for me, as an economic developer, I am excited about this because this is our growth area. So, we need the data, we need the service. So, we, we're growing in that, that's our growth area. That's where we're going to be putting more homes and hopefully more businesses. So, I know that's not affecting the schools as much except for kids coming in. But from a business point of view, that's, for me, it's a good thing. Also, if you need a place to put a cell tower, the north end, I have SOS from my house all the way to 29. So, I will not, I will not deter that. Just remember.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that is a question. What, what would be the difference between putting it on in the business park? Which is around the corner, which is not a compulsory education area.
And I'll take the rent. We will.
I would, I, you know, I'm, I would have to take a look at the location and, you know, take a look at the property and see where it would, if it would fit in. I, I, you know, I unfortunately can't answer that at the moment, but I can definitely...
And that site's within eight hundred yards of Amal, so there's really no difference in the distance from the school?
The distance is, that, the, the difference is that at least it would be private, public business, and it wouldn't be on an educational site, which I think could really be an issue for parents, some at least.
But it could still be with the same distance from the school?
From a school?
From a school?
Yes, sir.
Just a younger school?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yes, sir. Did you say?
So, um, just wanted to get my opinion out there for everybody. So, I am not opposed to putting a cell tower there. I would like to have input from the community. I am anxious to, um, you know, have a community, um, meeting to, to get opportunity to hear what they say. I think, uh, everybody in this room probably has a cellphone on them. And so, we need the, uh, that network, that backbone for us to do what we do every day. So, I'm certainly not opposed to it in that sense. But I would love to hear from my constituents, to hear what they have to say about it. So, if, if you're listening and you're opposed to this or if you're for it, contact the board members and let us know. And then when we schedule, uh, an opportunity for hearing for it, a public, um, debate, then certainly, you know, we'd love to see people come out and participate in that. But I think it's a good opportunity. Why would we consider this as a school division? For me, it, it's in an area of a property that's not utilized for the schools, and it's an opportunity potentially for us to earn some money. You know, we talk about tight budgets every year, although it's not a lot of money. It is, um, you know, in the thousands of dollars a year that could offset and provide some educational opportunities, you know, for our students. So, to me, it's a win-win.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm probably going to say the opposite of what everybody's saying in a different way. That's just who I am. Uh, I know we've talked about this before. I feel like I'm in deja vu. We have so many pressing issues in the school system that the cell tower is not on top of my list. But let me just say this. Economic development, I hear you. When my cellphone goes dead and I'm having an important conversation, I'm upset. We had this conversation, eh, ten years ago, trying to put a cell tower up, uh, 130. We went through four or five meetings, wasting time. I was there, and we didn't put it up. So, what the board, if the board is even into this, and I, I, I imagine we got into it from what you just said, there is a, there can be some monetary value. It's, it's a good site. Of course, Verizon wants to put it up. So, it would be quite simple. We talked last time or somewhere along the line about getting community input. And if there needs to be a community meeting, maybe the county can do it. I don't know. We have things to do here. I do. I'm not opposed or not, not unopposed, but we keep asking, "What are you going to do?" He's made a presentation, a young lady made a presentation, the same slides. I'm serious about this. We've been here, we waited forty-five minutes, and do we know anything yet? We know where we want it to be or where they want it to be. We've heard some controversy. I don't, I, I don't like to speak about the health of the children in a cell tower. Stay away from that because we can look that up. And that's, that's controversial. I mean, you can hear one group of people saying, "There's no harm, no danger." And yes, people choose, like you say, not to have it because they're probably doing what we're doing here tonight. So, I would say if we want to have the public involved, and, and just do it, have, whatever you call it, community, get involved. I imagine people know about this. I imagine, I imagine they know about it because it was in the paper. Was it Ja, uh, Josh? Uh, maybe not. But it's been...
It's going to be.
It's going, well, it's been, no, no, we talked about, we talked about it on the air here because I can hear myself listen to it. I didn't say anything last time. And I'm not being crazy this afternoon. I'm just saying, if we want public comment, go ahead and get it done. And let these people get the information, I appreciate, get the information that Ms. Thompson needs. And if that's going to make a difference, it probably would because people who want, who do or don't want cell towers in their midst want to know everything about it. I'll tell you that, you know, everything. And, and so, you know, I am not a scientist, electrician, none of that. I am into radiation. I do know a little something. So, I think if you, if, if the board says tonight and be through with it, let the public make a decision and then come back to us. Is that what we're talking about, Mr. Terry?
Uh, no, I think we're...
Here's my, Mr. Chairman, so our recommendation would be that we do the balloon test and hold a public hearing roughly at the same time at Manelson Middle School. We can have a hearing night separate from a board meeting night so it doesn't encroach on our board meeting business. And we can even do it jointly with the county so the county could even be involved in it. Or we can do it independent of the county. That makes no difference to me. But it would be that we hold a, we hold a public hearing regarding the tower. You can get input from the community. You can then make a decision on your decision based on that information. And then from there, it goes whichever direction it goes. But I think we do the balloon test and we would have a public hearing for you to get input from the community and then go forward from there. We could set this up for August, September timeframe, and then we can move forward with it. That would be, again, if the board so chose to move forward, we move forward. If the board so chooses not to, then we let Verizon know that you chose not to. And then I think that would be the easiest, quickest way for us to do it. And then if you so choose to do that, then the county could do their part and so forth. We would, Ms. Justice, for your point, we would have to advertise this. It would be advertised because it's a public hearing. We have to advertise it two weeks prior. So, it would be advertised, and we could probably even get Justin to do an article on it if he so chose within the timeframe so people know about it. And we would also advertise it on our social media and other platforms.
Dr. Wells, in order for us to have a joint meeting with the county, um, do they have to have applied in order for the county to do that? Which is what Dr. Hoden was saying.
Question this afternoon. So, based on what some of the members have said, we would have to have our public hearing. Because in order for them to have it with the county, they would have, we would have to have given blessing for them to then move forward. So, we need to have our public hearing first.
And I'm not hearing a blessing tonight.
Right, correct.
No. Tonight, I think, would be the consensus that we have the balloon test and we get public hearing, have a public hearing. And then you make a decision after that. That would be our recommendation to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the balloon test goes, that's a requirement for you to do that when it goes to planning or, okay. So, for us as a school board, the balloon test is not required. Is that correct?
Correct.
If we were to include a balloon test with our meeting, would that preclude it having to be done when it goes to planning? If it were to go to planning? Or would you have to do it again?
Yes.
You would have to do two?
Well, I have, we've talked to staff, and staff would consider that balloon test part of our, as part of our application. And so, we should, the one balloon test would, would satisfy whatever we needed to do for planning. So, we wouldn't have to repeat the balloon test. So, we would then, wouldn't have to do two of them.
Okay.
As long as we do one and we notify, and part of the balloon test is we have to note it, we have to put a, we have to put a notice in the paper, we have to notify adjacent property owners, and we have to post a sign. So, those are the three things that we have to do. So, as long as we do all those things, it would satisfy what planning staff, community development would, would want to see from us when we officially submit our application.
Well, thank you for that. I just really want to make sure that the public knows that this is in our area, in our arena for us to consider and communicate with them as a community and that it is not an official lease application moving forward.
Yeah.
So, to me, to hear you say that it's part of an official application, that concerns me.
I get, well, let me, we are, when, when we submit our official application, there's a process that the community development department has, and part of that is a balloon test. We're not officially submitting an application at this time. That would be after your community meeting. And we can, for your all's community meeting, we can definitely send out letters. Typically, that's what we do through the U.S. mail to notify people of the community meeting. Typically, you know, some, some jurisdictions pick a radius, some pick, you know, specific properties. So, we can send out letters and say, "Hey, there is, if, if you want Verizon to do that, we can do that. And we can notify people on such and such a day, I'm in Nelson's Middle School. At a specific time, we're having a public hearing to discuss this tower with, you know, you all and get their thoughts and opinions."
And, Mr. Chair, I want to clear up one thing. Also, ma'am, just so you know, before they can apply, the landowner has to sign. So, we haven't done that, and we're not ready to do that yet. So, they can't even apply until we have a consensus and sign. So, we're looking for a consensus to whether to have our public meeting and the balloon test for us. Is that what we're looking for?
Well, so, my question, Mr. Chair, is do we even need the balloon test for our hearing?
It's, it's not required, Mr. Childers, but I think for the community to see the height and maybe give them more feel as to what it's going to look like.
So, you think it would benefit the community to have it?
I think it would benefit the community to have the balloon test.
Okay.
And that way, you can, they can come in and say, "Here's a hundred and ninety-five feet. This is what it looks like." So, if they have concerns of the height of it, then they can, they can express those concerns to you as opposed to not really realizing what is a hundred and ninety-five feet. So, I think it would benefit the community to be able to give you more information when they come in and speak.
Yeah, the picture of the tower that you had, the monopole tower, I mean, that's a hundred and ninety-five feet, right?
Yeah, and, and that's taken from, you know, perspective of closure to the tower.
It's kind of hard to tell what that's going to look like sitting out back there.
And with the balloon test, we typically, we drive around and we take pictures, you know, from various locations. And so, if we do the balloon test prior to the community meeting, we can have those pictures readily available and, and present them to the community.
Okay.
And Nathan, could you also let us know what time you're going to do that so we can know if the public they'll be between nine and eleven or something like that?
Yeah, and, and we can also, you know, typically, we could, we can include that in a notice letter of the meeting that there'll be a balloon test on such and such a day. And that way, they know when the balloon test is and when the community meeting will be taking place.
And I would recommend the same day, if at all possible.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I think it would be a good idea for the community to see that. I do. One of the concerns I have is the notice letter. If it goes out to the community from Verizon, I don't know that every individual family might pay attention to it. Would it be possible that we send something from the school so that when they see it, they recognize the school name and then they look at it? And I say that from personal experience. I got a card in the mail when we were looking at it years ago, and it had Verizon's name on it. I didn't, I just tossed it in the trash. I went up and down my street, and every single person had tossed it in the trash. It was just one more flyer from Verizon. So, if there was something that could come from the school, I think that that would reach and speak to our community much more.
That's fair. Okay. Board, anything else?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're, we're in consensus that we need the public's opinion and would like their input so before we go signing a contract. So, if we could, Dr. Wells, Dr. Hoden, get, um, scheduled a, a meeting, go from there.
So, what we'll need to do is, again, from Ms. Thompson's point, where we need to get, you know, the range and the addresses and kind of figure that with county, with the county, just to pull those addresses so we know where to send the information to. And we'll do our public information as best we can to get information out from us. And then also work with Verizon on a date and work with you on a date. So, we'll probably give you some proposed dates that could occur based on Verizon's availability and your availability. But I think we'd be looking at late August, September timeframe before we can get this, to have enough time to get everything worked out.
Also think it would be important to include the parents of students that go to school there.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Board, anything else?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, you have several policies in front of you for first read. I would also like to mention that today, this afternoon, we had, was it three or four?
So, this, yes, sir. This afternoon, V S B A published three, um, additional, oh, not additional policies, three of the ones that are in your packet, D J F, J F C, and K B A. I say again, D J F, J F C, and K B A. Around three o'clock this afternoon, we received an update from V S B A. I have not read the policies yet because they came in so late. So, you may, what you'll get from us, once we have a chance to read them, is we'll send you information by email in the next week or so, updating those three as to what the changes were. But I'm just saying, those three policies may get some additional information because of what just came from V S B A. I know one was just a legal update, but I'm not sure about the other two, so I haven't had a chance to get into them yet. But once we get that done, we will send you an update on those. But there's a large stack here. Again, the three that the V S B A just updated today were D J F, J F C, and K B A.
So, again, you have those for first read.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Wells, five point oh one.
Now, we have finance, Ms. Laconich.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Your, as always, your June financial report is going to be provided at the next board meeting in August. We do that because we are, it's your year-end report, and we are still in the middle of closing out the year, moving from a cash basis to a modified accrual, closing out payrolls and all the accounts payables that were from the prior year and setting up receivables for any grants that are owed. We're still waiting on January, um, January, July and August sales tax. We're still waiting on January, um, January, July and August sales tax, and also the estimate of our health insurance claim runoff. So it's a lot of information that's still, that's material, that's outstanding. So at this point, it really wouldn't be a good snapshot of where we are. So that information, while it won't be final at the August, because again, we will still have the August sales tax, there's just a couple of things outstanding, and that report will be of better value. So it's more to come, and it'll just be there in August.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Neighbors with instruction. And before we get started, the first item under instruction is middle school electives, and Mr. Childers had asked us to include that on the agenda, so that's why it's on the agenda. And we'll take whatever questions the board may have regarding the middle school electives, and then Mr. Neighbors will carry on with his presentation.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Yep. So I just wanted to do a review of the middle school electives, because it seems like they've changed since last year. We had a technology, I'm sorry, we had a robotics course that we cut back, so because we had a math teacher, that we wanted to give her more sections in math, which I'm grateful for that, because we needed some assistance in math.
Yes, sir.
But it appears that we've totally eliminated that robotics course at this time, and I don't know that we've replaced it with anything. So that's question number one. Question number two is, have you reviewed the middle school program of studies that's on the middle school website?
So I'll answer in order there. So the first question, you are correct with all those points. We actually have been working with Mr. Holmes, even as recently as today, to make sure that we have all the concerns related to the wheel taken care of. And as you know, it's a couple of years in the making with not really having enough options. We've had students repeat, we've had some issues with making sure we have enough options for students. We have been able to work with Mr. Holmes to identify some space that he has in his schedule right now to be able to fix that problem. We're actually going to do the first run of that tomorrow, and we'll be able to get back with the board and verify that we have actually been able to fix that particular issue. The details on that, I'm working through with him. It really is coming out of some of the things we've been looking at for enrichment. So that also gives us an opportunity to expand some of our literacy enrichment options to more students. So it's kind of a win-win with what we're looking at now. But ultimately, we want to be able to make that run and be able to verify to the board that we've been able to fix that particular problem.
So are we looking at adding?
No, sir, we're able to do that within our current F T Es at Madison Middle, long-term.
How are we able to do that? We lost a, one of our teachers years ago that never got replaced during COVID. And I guess I'm just curious, because we have two middle schools, one nearly twice the size of the other, but they have the identical course offering. So how are we able to provide what's really needed for those kids, thinking about how many students are in a classroom in comparison, and that, you know, that Amherst Middle must have much smaller classroom student counts than Amherst, than Madison? And then looking at the program of studies, it shows a technology elective in there, and I don't know of any technology electives.
No, not currently offered. So just like the high school program of studies, that's an exhaustive list of what can be offered. Ultimately, we have to have it in the program studies to be able to offer the course going forward. That's been a licensure issue in years past, having somebody that can actually do that the way that we need to. Mr. Maddox has actually put forward a couple of recommendations in light of these conversations with Mr. Holmes to figure out how we can fix that long-term. Short-term, those are really the conversations we've been having with him. How do we make sure for this coming school year, we have those options available for students, so we're not having all those repeats and issues we've had in years past with that? Does that answer that question? Partially.
Not really. I mean, if we, if we made a program of studies for 25, 26, and we know we're not offering, we don't have any technology offerings, why would we put it in that program of studies? That makes no sense to me.
So again, just like what we do with the high school program of studies, if we don't have it in there, if we are able to locate a teacher, if we do have a position that's made available by the board at any point, we have to have that verified in our program of studies as something that we offer. It's a process we follow with the state, making sure we're using appropriate SCUD codes when we get students scheduled. We just have that as an ongoing, recurring, exhaustive list of the courses that we offer at those different levels. So really, no different than our practice with what we've done with the high school program of studies for many, many years.
All right. And then the only other thing I have about the program of studies is there's a potential conflict we need to address. On page eight, it talks about high school credits that can be omitted, and says that's only available for students in eighth grade. But then we're also offering Algebra I and Geometry to seventh graders. That would mean that according to that policy, those students would not be eligible for that grade to be omitted.
And I will double-check that, the expungement policy there, and how it's referenced in that particular program of studies. I'll make sure that verbiage aligns with that.
And then I think there may be some conflicts as well, as far as on the electives and availability, because it talks about band being a quarter elective, so available for nine weeks in semester. And I don't think that band is available for a nine-week selection. It's either semester or for the year, right?
That is correct. And again, it sounds like to me, I'm going to go back and verify the exact verbiage that they used, that that was probably an overextension of other things that we've done with electives, so it's a part of the wheel. You are correct, band is not something we look at on a quarterly basis. Of course, a student could always add. That's a pretty unusual distinction. Usually, they know from the beginning of the year if they're going to be in band throughout the year. So we'll just make sure that verbiage is aligned the way that it needs to.
Yeah, again, I just, I think that's something we need to consider as a board and as administrators, is those CTE offerings. You know, we, we've talked about ensuring that our students have lots of opportunities, and I just don't know that we have that in our current selection.
Absolutely. I know Mr. Maddox would be here to come to the board and talk about what those options could look like, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to reiterate, it sounds like if we're removing robotics and we don't have technology program offerings, what is it that we are offering to our students in line of technology, robotics, anything that gives those students with those type of skills and interests a place to grow and learn?
Absolutely. So if you don't mind, I would love to get clarification from Mr. Maddox on that. I don't have that quite all set in my brain just yet in regards to what those offerings are, but I'd be happy to provide that back to the board. I do know some, that is something that Mr. Maddox has continually come back to, exactly what you just said, Mr. Childers, how we're making sure the pathways are there for our students, especially at those grade levels, to be able to get into those interests and feed into those great CTE programs we have at the high school.
Correct. And you reminded me of the verbiage pathways, because we've talked about that for a while. We've gotten the mobile unit that we take down there and let the students actually have some hands-on experience. And we've had a priority in the past in which we want to get these type of opportunities in front of our middle school students, so that as they grow and mature, they have those experiences and that, those skills that they can take with them into the high school and into the workforce. So are we just sort of letting them slip out of our fingers? Do we still have them? Is that a still priority, you know, for the administration? It is for me as a board member. So that was my concern when I saw robotics leaving, and then tonight, hearing that there's no technology program. So any information you can get to me about those pathways for those students, I think, would be important.
Absolutely. And the short term, obviously, is making sure that we've got that wheel sewn up, and we're not having that issue of students repeating and repeating, which caused quite a bit of issue, particularly at Madison last year, long-term, meaning beyond the school year, we definitely.
For me, that's really only one part of the problem. I think we need to have a, a good elect, enough electives to satisfy the curiosity of our kids.
Completely agree.
And I think to answer your question, and what you said, is this is an exhaustive list that's available on the website, right? So we know, we can look at this list, and we can see what's, what's there to offer. We got art, band, music, ag science, and technology.
But no technology.
But no technology. So you have art, band, music, and ag science.
And part of the technology issue was having us find a certified teacher, because we didn't have one that was certified to teach it. Therefore, we couldn't offer it a couple of years, a few years ago. We still haven't found that individual who has that certification.
But it, but is it something we advertise for each year, and we continue to keep that on our website?
We've been looking, I have to look at, Mr. Gallagher back here to answer that question, but I know that initially, it was because we lost certifications, people left and lost certifications, and trying to find that certification's been difficult. Same with our ag science last year with, you know, the issue we had there.
Yes. Well, to me, it just goes back to priority. If that is what we want as an administration, as a board, as a school system, then, you know, we need to make those efforts to get that teacher in those sections.
Most certainly. Running to bring Mr. Maddox back, because even beyond what's traditionally been a technology course, there are other courses even within that realm that aren't as dependent upon licensure or specific licensures, that we would be able to still, again, make that pathway alive and well within the middle school, which is most certainly that priority going forward.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, what I'm hearing between the two, and I hadn't looked at it myself, but I'm familiar with it from my own children being there, probably just need to look at a revamping, just, I mean, that's the wrong word, just really kind of look at the whole picture there from the ideas that you've gotten tonight from Ms. Thompson and Ms. Childers. And I think we all can agree that technology is up top. You know, CTE, taking over workforce, all of that, that's middle school, come into camps every which way they can for technology. So while I had not looked at, I think it's a good idea just to reinforce that, take a good look at the middle school setup. It's probably long overdue.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I had on that.
Okay. Board, anything else?
So on the endorsement for that, what, what endorsement are we looking for, for someone?
Yeah, honestly.
When we talk about technology, is it, because we used to have like the old Perkins lab.
Correct.
Right? Is that what we're talking about, when we talk about technology?
In fashion.
Because I think at one time, we had a different technology teacher, though, that didn't do the, the, that STEM lab.
Right.
Right? So which one are we talking about? Either one, both?
I think at this point, we would be open to anything that, again, is going to keep that pathway alive. I know what Mr. Maddox has done a lot of work on is figuring out how we bring some of that into a little bit more of where we are now. So it's become a lot more specific, some of those technology components, of being able to find someone who has a general background or a general licensure that's able to fill maybe a couple of different spots as it relates to courses that we could offer through.
Well, again, and someone may get, I mean, this might get me in trouble, but we do have a teacher that is licensed in STEM.
Okay.
So, because she taught it for so many years.
Well, I.
I hope she's not going to fuss at me when I get home and say that. She loves teaching art, so she may not want to teach that class.
Well, they end up having a conversation.
But I'm just saying, you know, if we're looking for someone, I mean.
Absolutely.
Is it, for me, as a, looking at it as administrator, is it easier to fill an arts position or the STEM position?
Absolutely.
And she will kill me when I get home.
Well, and ultimately, I.
We discussed that, so, Mr. Maddox has discussed.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that. It's all, all the feedback at this point, especially getting into it and making sure we're covering the bases we need to, I appreciate that. Yeah.
Ms. Justice?
Mr. Chair, thank you. So the question that was asked by Ms., Mrs. Thompson was, so we've been, we've had a need for several years now. Have we been advertising for that position?
We had the robotics, which covered the technology stuff last year, but this year, we, we moved because we had to get the coverage. As far as advertising on the wheel, I couldn't speak to that. And Jim, you would have to, because I can't remember if we advertised that position or not.
Yeah, I'll do my best. We haven't advertised for an additional F T E, if that's what we're asking. I think if we're going to add a program at the middle school, it would take adding an endorsement to a current teacher and then deciding if they're going to teach that rather than what they're currently teaching. I've not been asked to, you know, add an F T E in that realm due to budgetary reasons. It would be an extra teacher, if that's what you're asking. So if you're looking at ways to do that, you would need to use a current teacher and look to add an endorsement perhaps, and then prioritize. And if it's somebody who's already teaching one elective and you give the added endorsement and you begin teaching another, you may pull the one that's currently being taught. That's, that's the answer. So there are ways, and, you know, what's easier or not, none of them are easy. Like, we're still looking for, you know, art currently. There's not a lot of applicants in any of those fields, but there are avenues to add endorsements to current teachers in different areas through practice assessments and so forth.
So I heard three things. I heard that we've got it advertised on the website as our program, so that we can hire someone if someone's available. I've heard that we have not been advertising for it because we don't have a full-time position for it. So, and that we can be creative to fill that position through an endorsement or moving someone around. But those two things are contradictory to me.
I think the advertising piece was that it's, when you're, you're saying it's advertised by being in the program of studies, it's not been posted at the middle school for a technology teacher on our website, if that's what you're asking.
Well, yeah.
When you say it's advertised, you're looking at the program, and it indicates that we offer that. I think that's what you were saying.
I think.
When you, we said advertise, I.
Well, I'm talking about if it's listed as, as Mr. Childers pointed out.
Correct.
If it's listed as a part of our program of studies, and we do not have a qualified teacher for that, then I believe he was suggesting that we should be taking it down. But then I heard Mr. Neighbors say that it has to be up there in order.
Right.
To put a qualified applicant into that position. But then I heard from you that we haven't done that because we, it's a budgetary concern to have a F T E in technology.
That's, I just told you that we have not advertised specifically for a middle school position for technology, and that, from an H R perspective. If someone was wanting to offer that program, you'd have to look at a current teacher. When I said budget, that's because we don't have the option to add an F T E teacher that I'm aware of. I'm not sure if that's been something we've made an effort to do, I'm not aware. But a current teacher would have to add that endorsement in order to teach that in the building. There are pathways that you could search to do that, if in fact, in the program of studies, we wanted to offer that rather than something else that we're currently offering. So I don't know if that answers the question. I'm trying to be about as clear as I can be, so I apologize.
Thank you.
So again, I'm just, I'm confused on that, because we had an F T E, because we had a robotics teacher, that we consumed a portion of it, and now, and that's the whole part that I'm, I'm really concerned about, is that we were already, as you said, the wheel, we were already short in the wheel, where we were double-booking kids.
So on that.
But how did we get rid of a course?
She was teaching.
And we still have enough more room to put these kids in.
She was teaching, I think, two math and three robotics, or three math and two robotics. So we pulled that away with band. Band last year was a full-year course. Band is no longer a full-year course. Band is now semester for eighth and ninth, for seventh, sixth and seventh grade. So it opens up more spaces on the wheel, as opposed to being a year-long class, it gets you space there. And we also, they added the English, I forgot the name of the course.
Novel study.
Novel study course into the program there, so students are going to be in novel study, which also impacts their ability to get remediation and other additional support in reading, so they get a novel study class. The students will be in novel study, as opposed to being in year-long band, or being in semester band. Therefore, they can take that twice as opposed to being locked in that. So it offers more opportunities for students to take those classes. Now robotics was, again, the math teacher, that math teacher needs to be teaching math. We're not in trouble for robotics, we're in trouble for math, and we need her teaching math. And that's why that decision was made.
We're not questioning that. I already said that we like the idea of going to, of doing the math, but what we're saying is that the position of robotics got eliminated, right?
That was not a position, that was a math teacher teaching robotic sections as opposed to math.
And was she, did she have the endorsement?
Yes, but she also has the math endorsement, therefore, she's teaching math this year. That's where we need her. I need her in math. She's the best math teacher in the school, I need her teaching math.
So we've changed programs, but we've not lost FTEs, so there's nothing to post for specifically as well as trying to indicate, so.
And I'd be happy if the board would like to be able to, once we've made that run tomorrow, verified that we're working the way that we have envisioned it would, be able to provide that breakdown. I can send out an email, send it through Mr. Terry, however y'all would like to do that, just to give you an idea what that's going to look like for 25, 26. Again, short term, wanted to be able to fix some of those logistical issues. Long term, we know this is an issue we have to come back to, to be able to keep those pathways open to increase those opportunities for kiddos.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Neighbors.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems like to me, in the recent past, there was a requirement for us to do pathways with our middle school students. Is that still a requirement?
So we still work with them every year on their career plan, essentially, so they have that time where they're working with counselors, working with other teachers to be able to figure out what some of those goals are, long-term. That ultimately does or should feed into those offerings, like what you're talking about with those pathways.
So the requirement is more planning, like paper, planning with students?
It is.
So, I feel like, for me, there's been a time in our county, in our schools, in which we made a big push on CTE. And I thought that that's where we were headed. I'm a little surprised to find where we are at this point. So I guess I would like to see if this is a priority for the administration, for the board. If so, can we talk about moving forward, the pathways, offerings that we can offer so that our students are prepared to move into those kind of skilled areas at the high school? Because we have a lot of students out there that have a lot of interest in hands-on technology and anything that we can do to grow and feed them. So we, it sounds like we just need to all get our priorities and get on the same page.
Yes, ma'am.
But that might come into play, if you can share with us a little bit more about what those pathways are and how we are mentoring our middle school students along those lines. That would be important for me.
Absolutely. And I'd be happy to have Mr. Maddox come back, if that's okay, to our next meeting. Wanted to look over my shoulder, wishing he was out in the peanut gallery to be able to give us some of that. But at the end of the day, really wanting him to be able to come back and lay out what some of his visions are, because I know he's put a lot of work into envisioning what that could be.
Thank you.
Board, any more questions? Okay, moving on. All right, moving on. We wanted to bring back this month, some additions to our initial preliminary data presentation from last month. So what I will be doing here is providing a little bit of background information, some clarifying information, and then handing off to our wonderful data team there in the corner, Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Matheny, who joined us this evening. So what I wanted to start with on our second slide there, was just kind of, again, a reminder of what we're talking about. So this is still our data, preliminary, that we have collected, nothing official from the state, it's going to be a little bit before we get any of that. We've provided the raw scores that we provided last month. Again, in addition to that, though, we've given numbers relative to students that, based on how things have historically been calculated, would qualify for what's called recovery or growth. So we wanted to provide those numbers to the board tonight, those just raw numbers of students that we believe could fall into those categories, depending upon what VDOE decides as we are going forward. Ultimately, that gives us a picture of how those pass rates will be impacted as we're moving into getting those official accreditation results a little bit later in the fall. We have not taken a swing at calculating, we actually thought that there was going to be a new calculation system coming into next school year. That all did not come to fruition. We are now still waiting for the VDOE to tell us officially what that's going to look like, but we wanted to give the board at least an idea of what we think that could look like as we're going forward and how that will impact those pass rates for us. Just a couple of terms we wanted to cover, so when we're thinking about the word recovery, ultimately, we're talking about a student who had failed their SOL in a previous year and the current year on their first attempt passed the SOL. It only applies to reading and math, it doesn't apply to either third grade or high school EOC courses, but ultimately, this is really showing that student has made that growth, they weren't where they needed to be from a pass rate standpoint. Previous year, they've been able to meet that mark or exceed it in current year, so always great to see that recovery, or those recovery numbers, I should say. The other piece we'll be talking about tonight, relative to growth, this is still where we have the most mystery, I guess you might say, around how exactly VDOE is going to prescribe. We have gone back to what it has historically been, so when we're talking about students that we have identified as likely meeting growth, we're using these definitions. So students, excuse me, looking at those reading and math SOLs, again, they're failing that SOL in the current year, but they have moved that vertical band. So thinking about being able to bump up those scores and how that looked from one test to the next, not passing the test, but being able to make enough to be considered to have achieved growth. Last year, we didn't get official calculations, we didn't kind of get any kind of worksheet for that. We literally just got raw numbers that we then plugged in to what the state provided to us. So this is still something that they haven't given us a lot of information on, even historically. Current year, we are waiting, eagerly anticipating what that information will be, so we can give a little more specific guidance and give a little better idea of what it might look like when we're getting those official results in September. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to our team there in the corner, go through school by school, exactly what we're looking at with some of those recovery and growth numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Mr. Neighbors said, Ms. Matheny and I are going to just kind of give you a quick overview of where our schools are specific to raw data, including the number of students that were kind of in the range that qualified for a retake, number of students who are considered recovered, because they failed a previous SOL and then passed on the first attempt this year, and then the number of students that moved in those growth bands, again, by content and by school. So first off is Amalon Elementary. So at Amalon, as you can see by those up arrows there, we're seeing encouraging signs of progress across all four of their content areas compared to where they were last year. Improvements range from 4% percentage points in math to 14 percentage points in reading, with really strong movement, if you look there to the far right, with the growth bands for students in reading and math who maybe didn't pass that SOL, but they did show tremendous growth, moving from one re-band to another. Overall, these results at Amalon suggest that we're moving in the right direction there in that building. Next up, we have Amherst Elementary School. You can see at Amherst Elementary School, we are meeting or exceeding pass rates for benchmarks in reading, math, and history, with notable improvement there with the up arrows in math and history. Science continues to be an area of concern, and that's an area we're going to continue to focus on specifically at Amherst Elementary with the drop there that we saw from the previous year. And science specifically is not, you know, a one-school thing, it's something division-wide that we're going to continue to look at. When we think about Central Elementary School there, Central did experience some fluctuations in their pass rates this year. Math did show an improvement from 53% to 57%, and we can kind of acknowledge that with significant growth that occurred in grades four and five impacted that positive growth there. Science, again, as I mentioned, with Amherst Elementary, continues to be an area of focus. Last year's science pass rate was below benchmark, again, with this year's, it also fell below where it was last year. And so some of the targeted supports that we put in place this year with the school improvement grant, with STEM scopes, being able to put a science support specialist there this year that's actually going to be based at Central Elementary School, we're going to continue to kind of prioritize science specifically, but also all of the academic areas at Central.
So that's new for the 25, 26 school year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. When we think about Elan Elementary, again, Elan, when you can look at the up arrows in the green there on the chart, they're meeting or exceeding pass rates in math, science, and history. Notable improvement there in reading with just one percentage point, if we look at raw data, from meeting the state benchmark. Likely, when we look at the number of recovery students there in reading, they will hit that 75% benchmark and just continue to build that positive momentum there at Elan. Then moving on to Madison Heights Elementary School, so you can see the increase there with math and science specifically at Madison Heights. Although, the data there shows that they did have a decrease in reading, there were certain grade levels that did see an increase this year. So we just want to go back and make sure that we're replicating what was happening in that grade level across the building. I do want to point out that if you remember data from previous years for Madison Heights, they had a pass rate in science at 15%. So they have made tremendous improvement specifically in science. Again, attributing a lot of the hands-on manipulatives and things that we were able to purchase with some of that school improvement money, again, specifically noting STEM scopes, being able to provide that resource to our teachers. And again, looking to the far right there, the number of students who moved from growth bands, when we look at those scaled scores, is also promising. And then finishing out our elementary schools, we have Temperance Elementary School, who you can see met benchmarks and did have some movement in a positive direction there specifically in reading, science, and history. We do see a little bit of a dip there in math, but still meeting the pass rate there for raw data. And so even though the school continues to maintain positive performance, you know, we're going to continue to dig into the data there through our comprehensive needs assessment, looking at subgroups, again, trying to see what we can continue to build on there in that building. And Mrs. Matheny is going to talk to you about our secondary data.
All right, so looking at Amherst Middle School, our pass rates for Amherst Middle have remained relatively stable, and they are meeting and exceeding benchmarks in reading, math, and history. One of the things I do want to make a note of for Amherst Middle in particular is the science scores. We did not administer a science SOL score at the middle schools this year because of a pathway change. So the scores that they had the previous year will actually carry over into this next accreditation year, so that 65% will carry over and will be something that we're working on strengthening up to meet that required 70% pass rate for them. But if we look at Manellison Middle School, they're also making some great gains there. And again, just like Amherst Middle, looking at that science score in particular, because their science pass rate fell significantly below the benchmark, looking at some of the things that we've put into place this past school year and upcoming school year through our school improvement grant, using the materials from STEM scopes, and also our instructional specialist is going to be providing more significant levels of support there in the upcoming year. For reading and math, Manellison has shown improvement in both of those areas with a significant amount of students falling into that recovered category. So that means, again, those students failed the previous year and have now passed, so that's very encouraging to see that happening at Manellison. We also saw pretty significant numbers of students that scored in the retake-eligible range, so they're very, very close to passing, which gives us an opportunity to make sure that as we're moving into the upcoming school year, we're really looking at what are those gaps that the students have and how can we fill those in as we're moving forward into the next grade level. So again, positive there for the growth. For Amherst County High School, we did see some slight decreases in pass rates for reading and math. Science and history remained relatively steady to where they were the previous year. But, again, looking at the significant numbers of students that scored in that retake range, giving us an opportunity, as we're moving into this next school year, to identify who those students are, the types of support they need, and really providing those targeted interventions for students. One also thing to note about the high school is that those growth and recovery measures don't generally apply to those courses that are at the high school, because those are end-of-course courses, with the exception of Algebra I, which does qualify for recovery. And so, one of the things that you have to keep in mind about the high school is that all summer long, we continue to have students come in and we provide remediation and work with those students. So those numbers should increase based on the activity that's happening this summer to boost those pass rates. And as far as English goes at the high school, English pass rates continue to be relatively strong when we're looking at our raw data. The last slide here that I wanted to point out, as far as division data goes, we brought you division data last month, but Dr. Wells had asked us to look at that data specifically in reading and math and look at whether those levels of mastery compared to the calculations that we've always done with VDOE, how we would perform in that regard. So if we look at overall as a division, using those historical recovery and growth calculations that we've received from VDOE, we're meeting and exceeding those required pass rates at the division level for reading and math. And if we apply those calculations to the school level, we would have six out of nine of our schools meet those required pass rates outright for reading and seven out of nine for math as well. And again, those are some positive encouragements that we're seeing in our data, but as Mr. Neighbors mentioned a minute ago, we're still kind of awaiting from the VDOE what those calculations are going to look like with the upcoming school year for accreditation and accountability. But we're seeing lots of growth across all of our schools as well.
I don't believe Ms. McNerney, yep, one more slide there. So what's next? We're going to be providing in the next bullet, detailed memo of kind of our upcoming timeline, what that looks like to get this accountability data back from the state. We're expecting that in September, is a typical timeframe for that. Nothing to tell us that would be different this year. Obviously, that's going to tell us where we are from an accreditation standpoint, give us information relative to federal identification, all the other pieces that drive some of those more specific supports and that technical assistance that we provide to schools based on that information. Schools are doing their own data digs, some actually as we speak, or at least as we did this morning, at certain schools, really get into that. We do that at the division level as well, to really look at those trends, how do we best support teachers in the classroom, how do we best support administrators across the division, being able to move forward with that, and think about ongoing school improvement, and anything we have to do with monitoring our federal identification. So ultimately, that data for us, from a division standpoint, really helps guide a lot of those efforts that we put into, that strategic support for each of our schools. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions the board might have. Board, any questions for Mr. Neighbors, Ms. Wheeler, or Ms. Matheny? Yes, sir.
So, I guess my first question is, how do we feel about the results that we've seen? This is, I guess, more for the administration. Are we happy with the results?
Never, never happy till it's 100%. And I know that sounds glib, but that's, that's the reality, right? If we're going to save every child every day, we need to, need to own that. For me, I think the positive trends are really looking at a couple of different data points. So those are strong numbers, when we're thinking about recovery and growth, the state calculates as they have in the past, I think we're going to end up with some very positive numbers at a lot of our schools where we've really needed to see that growth, right? Really need to see those numbers improve. The population that I have most honed in on throughout this data analysis process are those students that fell 375 to 399, is in some pockets. It's a very large number of students that we got very, very close, but didn't get to where we needed them to get to. So thinking about how we move forward and how we target all students, but target specific groups of students to really get that next bump and take that next step, that's a large group of students that we need to be focusing on even more so, to make sure they're making that move. There's a lot of potential in the data, maybe is the way to say that, but certainly not, not where we want to be. And that sentiment's been echoed by every administrator that, at least I've spoken to over the last month and a half. We know there's some positive trends, we know there's some good things happening, we also know there's a lot of work to be done still with that.
How did, how does this data align with our projections? So all year long, you know, we talk about data, 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 right? And so we're making decisions on tiered interventions and remediation, and so, you know, obviously, we have students, again, I like to think of the Stoplight Report that I asked for, you know, the red, yellow, green. The students that we have predicted that were, you know, red and yellow, did they kind of fall within those groups? So the, you know, I'm looking here at Amherst High School, and we had 43 students in math that fell in that 375 to 399 range. Were those the kids that we were predicting were kind of in there? So, and I guess I'm asking that question because to get to the point of, are we providing the right students with the targeted interventions that they need to be successful? And it just, we just didn't hit the bar with these kids? Or have we gotten that far into the data yet to make that determination?
Right, and that's the process we're in right now. We really do try to approach that school by school. And one of our best indicators there, and again, you alluded to, not necessarily having that universal system or indicator to be able to tell us all those pieces, but really getting down to the nitty-gritty, honestly, with each teacher, did we really hit the mark with where we needed to be? And that's a lot of what that data dig does. Are we surprised by some of these kiddos, good or bad? What does that actually mean? How do we trace that back to what was provided them over the course of the school year to get them to that point? So the, the short answer is, we're still in process with that, with the data digs that are ongoing, and what we'll be doing at the division level. But that's really how we try to approach it. Do we understand that student by student? Are we able to take that information and create a more specific action plan going into next year?
And so the reason for me asking that question.
Yep.
As a board member is to assess, like, everything that we stand behind, that we're, you know, are approving, that you ask for, you know, for, you know, to support our students.
Absolutely.
Are we making the right decisions? So are we making the right decisions in, in supporting what you guys are asking, so are y'all making the right decisions? And so ultimately, we look at the test numbers and we can get a, a quick snapshot and say, we've made some progress, but we're not nearly where we need to be.
Right.
Right? But that's why I'm really curious to understand, and I would love to get some information back, as far as looking into that data, the students that we were projecting and providing those remediation to, was it effective? And so, you know, then asking the question, if that wasn't effective, what do we need to do this year to make it effective?
Exactly, yeah. And we actually spent Tuesday with our administrators and leadership conference going over similar concepts, right? Understanding why we use some of the systems and structures that we do, thinking about PLC, thinking about intervention tracking. It's really hitting at exactly what you're talking about now. Do we know what we're doing is effective for each kiddo? Show me how, show me how we got there. How do we replicate that? If it's not working, who else do we need to bring in? What else do we need to bring in to be able to make that work? So, spot on with exactly what those processes are supposed to bring us, but as a part of that data dig, and what we can bring back later in the fall with our overall accreditation data, would be happy to share that as well.
And so with that, we get some type of, and again, I'm not asking for specifics on And so with that, we get some type of, and again, I'm not asking for specifics on individual students. We don't need that as a board. But what I'm asking for is overall, how effective were we as an administration at predicting which of our kids really needed those interventions and then how successful were they?
Some of those trends that are coming out of those data digs, absolutely.
And that way, it helps us come behind you, which I think is part of what our job is, to support you, to provide the funding for, you know, all these things that we're asking for so that ultimately, you know, we're doing it for the betterment of all of our kids.
Absolutely, yeah. And again, I know sometimes it's tough with the overarching presentations like this to get all the detail we need. Always happy to be able to schedule some of that additional time with every member of the board to be able to work through some of that. There's a lot that goes into it and there's a lot of work that our teachers put in, teams put in over the summer to be able to really get into that data. Obviously, we can provide those themes, kind of those big ideas, pictures, but always happy to dig further out if anybody would be interested in that.
Mr. Chair. Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your willingness to dig into that. I think knowing if we're successful is a good thing. Along those lines, we have a lot of different programs that have been put in place the last few years. So maybe if you have time to do some kind of a general analysis of which ones are most successful, maybe the ones that aren't meeting your expectations, you know, as, as well as, you know, subgroup data. I know that's coming not too long, isn't it?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's definitely been a part of entry consultations I've had, not just with staff up here, but with administrators and teachers as well. Are we actually utilizing what we have out there in our classrooms to be able to, right? So all of that is a part of what we're looking at. Again, if we don't know it's working, we need to find something else that we know will.
That's right. Which programs are the most successful?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Board, yes, ma'am.
I don't like, I've never been one to single our schools, so I'm not going to start to do that tonight, but what is, someone can answer, what in the world is going on with history? If somebody could just help me with that. Because that, and like I said, I don't want to go back to the slide because I'm not about singling out schools, but can someone just shed some light on that with me? What you can, whatever you can help me with, because I, that's pretty tight right there.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. This, I won't do this very often, but this is where I will say, this is day seven on the job right now. That is part of my day-to-day with it, but that is what jumps out, or one of the pieces that jump out to me as well. I know there are a lot of individual nuanced situations that we talk about with that in certain schools, certain, certain scenarios, but at the end of the day, we know that is an area that, that needs work, for sure.
And I just, especially when, when it's in elementary level.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't get much better unless we turn that around real quick. And then the next discussion, which I had 25 years ago, I'll just say that because I'm old. What is with science? I, I don't know. Science to me, just because I'm a, in sciences, different way, but science is science. I don't understand every year why we are just going all to pieces with science. Is, is this what someone said, I respect you, you just got to this position, but you're doing quite well. Let me just tell you, thank you, kudos. But here it is, I didn't want to throw this out there, but since you brought it, what in the world has happened that we are not getting what we need in science? This just didn't start this year and last year. It's been a conversation in this county for a minute. I'm just trying to get a hold of it.
At the elementary level, we've, we're going to look at best practice and we've had some schools that have done well in science and what they are doing, I think they've done more of a, of a decision, those particular teachers have done more, the science is a fourth and fifth grade class. So what you get taught in fourth grade, you don't get tested on until fifth grade. And if that fifth grade teacher does not go back and reteach some of those concepts from fourth grade at a high enough level, then those students don't carry that knowledge forward. And so what we're finding in some, some of the conversations we've had with schools so far this early summer into where we are now is we've, we've seen evidence of that, that the teachers that really went back and focused and spiraled in the fourth grade concepts into their fifth grade content are the ones who've done really well. Their scores were better. So now we're going to make sure that happens at all schools. And those fifth grade teachers really need to make sure they're spiraling in that content from fourth grade to make sure that they can carry that content forward in the fifth grade so teachers, so the students don't lose that content, that knowledge they had in fourth grade. Because if you, if you expect somebody 10 years old to remember something from, you know, September of fourth grade year into May of their fifth grade year, they're probably not going to get it unless you really are specific and focused on reteaching that material throughout and pulling it back into your fifth grade content. And the ones that are most successful, the scores, that are the better schools that have scored higher are the ones that are doing that more consistently. And that's something we have seen and we're going to make sure we push this year and make it a, a drive across the division. Those fifth grade teachers really have to do that and really give them supports to do that.
And I, I agree, and I think you told us that a little bit before. That's why you brought my mind to it. But I think that, that ought to be a priority now. As a school board member, no, I'm going to take back half of what I said, not, not half of it. As a school board member, I don't ever mandate what you all should make stu, make teachers do. However, if there's inconsistency
Correct.
in, in the division, and the science is science, is science, then everybody ought to be on board. One of the, the orientations with teachers or whatever have you, have you get together, it ought to be said that, you know, this, this school is looking good in science and I would like, if at all possible, for you to maybe talk to this person or whatever manner of reason you do it, so that we can get this thing over. I did write down, and I'm almost through, Ms. Terry, on the science support. Now, what, what, what does that mean? You putting someone in the school system to do what?
So we have an instructional specialist that's going to be dedicated particularly to science this upcoming school year. So she'll be able to look with teachers at science curriculum, co-plan together, looking at ways to spiral those skills in, ways to bring some more hands-on investigations and give students more ownership of those investigative skills throughout the school year. And so we are looking at prioritizing those schools that need more support with science. But as you mentioned before, one of the things that we do offer, we have science leads at every school in our, in our division. And one of the things that we are going to be looking at, at the beginning of the year, one of our first-year meetings, is actually digging into our data and looking at those specific skill weaknesses from fourth grade in particular for, for elementary, but also for grade six and life science, because those are also included on the physical science test for middle school as well. So we're going to be digging into that and kind of sharing strategies across the division with each other as science leads, but then they can take that back to their schools and share that as well.
Well, I, I think that's, I'm through. I think that's, that has to happen in order to be, in order to, and you know, I've never dealt with that word growth, I just stopped right there. I, I see that and I appreciate that. But the scores that I saw in a couple of things, and I appreciate what Dr. Wells has said, I think that has to happen. Collaboration will bring those scores up. Now, I haven't done any science in elementary in a while, probably don't want to. But I, I do remember we were starting some, some things in the classroom where the students were getting more hands-on, and I thought somebody said that was going to bring us over the top. That took us to the bottom.
Yeah, it's more so making sure that we're actually following through and doing that and providing those opportunities for students.
Well, I mean, like I said, I don't like to be critical, but every now and then, when I see, I looked at this last night, when I see some numbers, I think, I think it's my responsibility just to throw something out there. And it's not about what must be done. I, I think it's what we really need to put a lot of attention to. And that's probably why I said about the cell tower, right? I'm more, I'm more concerned with that number I saw with history than I am about a cell tower. I'm through, Ms. Terry.
I'll say part of the conversation that I had with staff on Tuesday during leadership was focused on making sure we collaborate and we share what works in our schools that is working. And they're really communicating with the schools that aren't to make sure that we're on the same page. Because if it's working at three of our schools, it can work at the other three of our schools. And there's no reason it can't. I do know at one of our schools, we did have some personnel issues in which there was somebody at the end of the year was out because of maternity leave and that kind of affected, I'm not making excuses for it, but those things did happen. But there's no reason if we can do it at three schools, we can't do it at the other three.
And I respect, I respect what you just said. However, I heard that too, not from you. You remember that, don't you? Science teacher was out or something. And, and we understand that because when you have, this is no disrespect for teaching or subbing, let me just get clear. But when you have that transition and, and then we, at the end of the year, we come up with these terrible scores because of that transition. So I don't know what we need to do with that. The sub or the transfer, fair enough, teaching, we cannot let the students suffer for that. And that's not called what you said, but I've heard that has happened to us in the past. It happened right down the road, teacher was gone or something, and the science grades dropped to the bottom. And we look like, may not be for that reason, that it's happening again. I, I just feel I need to throw that in there. I am through this time.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. So one of the first questions that I had was, I, was the statistical viability of the numbers and how our, our raw data is comparing to like the VDOE. And so one of the things that I looked at in one of the schools was just looking at the pass rate. And when I look at the previous three years, I just want to say that our raw data estimates are lower than what we actually end up achieving. So I just want to say that's really good. The other thing I wanted to say was, when I was looking at one school in 2021 for science, it was 54, 2022 was 38, then it went up to 47 in '23. And we saw a similar trend, which I know you're aware, but it's like, we can't sustain that very long. We can't sustain it, period. And then the other thing was, at the beginning of last school year, you know, we budgeted, I think it was five grand for the nature nurtures audit. I have not seen that report. And I'd like to know, that was specifically for science. I'd like to know how that helped us. You know, so.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, oh, and then the third thing is just, I may be missing it, but it would be nice to have these presentations on our board docs so we can look at it prior to coming here. Now, that might be me, I'm a technical person.
It was under executive content on board docs. You have to log in.
Okay, I'll keep scrolling. And I can go back to previous years and do the same thing, right? Okay, well, I'll work on it, technically challenged. Thank you very much.
Board, anybody else?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say thank you for providing the additional science support. I think that's really important. And I know what Dr. Wells said about spiraling that content in fourth grade content into fifth grade, or, you know, even a fourth grade can teach fifth grade content because the students are ready. So that conversation has been around Ms. Leggins for a long time. And, you know, we're, we're all disappointed when we find out that's not happening. So I think the science support, when the science leads will be able to help with that. My purpose for this little comment is to our school principals. The school principals are instructional leaders in our buildings. And they need to be in those classrooms and they need to be looking at lesson plans and they need to be assuring our superintendent that that data is spiraled, not after the tests are done, but during the school year as it's going on. And I remember Ms. Leggins, when I first came on the board almost nine years ago, maybe eight years ago, we did not have assistant principals. But we specifically put them in the schools to free principals up to become a quality instructional leader in each of our buildings. And I trust that each of our principals is doing that. But if they're not, we need to be holding them accountable. That is going to be one of the greatest things they can do to make sure those type of things are not happening, or I should say that they are happening, that that spiraling is taking place. So just, it, it's a team effort, I know, and I thank you for that. But I just want to reiterate, I know one of our plans that you gave us on school improvement is that the DOE came back and they said the principal should become the instructional leader and should mark time off in their calendar to be in those classrooms and reviewing lesson plans. So I guess I just want to support that and reiterate that because it is a team effort. And that science support person and those science lead teachers can't do it on their own.
And we spent eight hours on Monday, on Tuesday, having a conversation with all of our principals. And they got some, some good PD from our staff on making sure they are the instructional leader and they can lead this school, what they need to be doing and what the expectations are. They were also told what the expectation was going to be, that we'll be all green by 2028. And that's the expectation of this school, of me to them and of you to them as well. I told, they were, they were told that and they, basically in that term, so that's where we're going to be. And that's our goal, that's where we're going to get to. And we need to do what we have to to get there. And so we're going to get there.
Well, thank you, appreciate that accountability. I mean, we're all accountable to each other. Thank you.
Board, anyone else?
Yeah, I would like to, you know, mesh a little bit what Ms. Wheeler and, and Mr. Neighbors both said, you know, if the score is 15% or the score is 85%, neither one of them's 100. So we can't go, yeah, 85 is good, we're going to concentrate on the 15. Because for long, that 85 will slide. So we need to keep pushing. When we see hundreds all the way, you know, that's when you know you exactly where you want to be. So, thank you guys for everything.
Next.
All right, got a lot of bullets tonight. The next is a memo we wanted to lay out our timeline that we have from the state in regards to when we're going to get some official accountability results from them. You'll see in July and August, there's a lot of reporting, a lot of verification, a lot of things that are going back and forth between us and the state. We start to get some preliminary data. Again, that's still unofficial embargo data towards the end of this month because, and Ms. Matheny mentioned it earlier, there's so much testing we are still doing even over the summer. Those results will continue to change and continue to be augmented as we're going forward. When we get into September, that's where we really start to see some things coming back from the state in a more official capacity. So sometime in those first couple of weeks, we will get the release of the school quality profiles, we'll get some final accreditation results, we'll get some information related to federal identification. All that will be released to us first before it goes public later in the month of September and then is widely available. So depending upon the timeframe for that, we're hoping that in September, we'll be able to bring those final accreditation results to the board and talk about what that means for us. We spent a lot of time on Tuesday talking about a results orientation. We have this data, what are we doing about it? That's really what, what we want it to be in September. It's not just what the numbers are, what does that mean we're going to do, how are we going to move forward, make sure we're addressing the concerns that the board was just bringing up there a moment ago. So this gives you that rundown. Again, September's going to be our month where a lot of that is coming down. As that information is available, we'll be continually talking to you about that. A lot of miles to go from a reporting standpoint before we get there, but we're expecting it, same timeframe as usual there in September. I'll answer any questions the board has about that.
Okay, board?
All right, we'll keep on rolling. The next one, and I believe Ms. Thompson alluded to this a moment ago, a report from the Office of School Quality, so our three schools that were federally identified for this past school year. They had consistent check-ins and meetings and interactions with Dr. Powers and Dr. Cox from VDOE. We found them to be excellent partners in this process and I was pleasantly surprised by how engaged they were, the specificity of the feedback and ideas that they were giving to principals. They've had that experience, they've done the job, they've worked in schools where they've turned them around and brought them forward. And all of our principals that were engaging with them made comments multiple times about how valuable those times were with them. So we're very fortunate to have both of them working with us this year. Did have some great commendations there, excited to see that. As Ms. Thompson alluded to earlier, the common, the recommendations, excuse me, really centered around how are we prioritizing those components of the job that we associate with instructional leadership? How are we making sure that yes, there are so many things that come up over the course of the day, so many responsibilities that our principals have? How do we support them with that? But ultimately, how do they work to develop those systems for themselves to be where they need to be in those classrooms, knowing what's going on, supporting those teachers directly? A lot of our conversation on Tuesday revolved around this, really digging into what does it look like to be an instructional leader? We asked them to look in the mirror. We've been looking in the mirror as a division team. How do we support them with that? How do we develop those systems that aren't asking more without giving that support? How are we encouraging them, giving them the tools they need to be able to do all of those pieces? So we were glad that we saw some alignment, not just what we got with OSQ, but feedback we've also gotten from principals and ultimately the direction we want to be able to go as we're moving forward. We want to be able to support them in meeting these recommendations that the office has laid out for them. So again, I'll answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Board, any questions for Mr. Neighbors?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, last but not least, I will turn it back over to Ms. Wheeler to give the board an update on VLA implementation.
And it's okay, I'm going to roll in HMH as well and make it a one-stop shop. So for the Virginia Literacy Act is full swing ahead. We are in full implementation for the 25, 26 school year. And what that means for us is that we are extending all of the requirements of the VLA now into grades four through eight. So that means that those students in grades four through eight who have failed an SOL test in the previous year will qualify to have the VOWS assessment administered, which is the assessment we currently use in K3. The state has come out with a version for four through eight, a little less cumbersome as far as subtask, but really to drill down to those students who are having difficulty, what is the piece or what are the pieces, as we spoke to, what interventions do we need to put in place to shore up those foundational reading skills to make sure those students have the capacity to then be able to go and take that reading SOL test. And so with that comes student reading plans. So those are being extended now into stu, for students in grades four through eight, to be able, that those students have access to remediation during the WIM time at elementary school or during a remediation block at middle school. Along with that, we are working to move into year two of our open court implementation, so really making sure that we're supporting our teachers with being able to address the instruction in the three color bands that they started with last year, really being able to move into true fidelity with the program materials there to see where that gets us with our tier instruction or tier one instruction. And then this year, we are moving into year one of HMH as our core curriculum for secondary school. So I want to, again, thank you for approving that curriculum for us and for us to be able to move forward with that. We have training set up for that in August for our teachers, the end of this month for our administrators to be able to get an overview of what that program will offer them, specifically from the data standpoint, to be able to speak to where our kiddos are. And resources are in the process of being delivered, and we hope to have everything in place when school starts. So, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, any questions for Ms. Wheeler? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Dr. Wells, moving on.
Next, we have Human Resources, Mr. Gallagher.
All right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening to you all. The first item you have up this evening for HR is the vacancy memo in front of you. And as you know, we're very active in this, in this summertime, so there are some updates to that already. We have, if you notice, that we have multiple positions. We have hired the math teacher for AEC. We have hired the English teacher for Manellison. We do still have the elementary teacher for TES, which ultimately could also be an art position because that individual would like to transfer. And if we hire art, we could not have that need. So that's good. It has flexibility. Special education teacher, we have no more vacancies there. We are full. And we do still have the counselor position, and there have not been very many applicants that are qualified there unfortunately to date, so we keep working at that. Reading specialist as well remains open. Down under classified positions, we do still have several instructional assistant positions to fill, actively seeking to do that. We have one school health assistant remaining vacant. We do have the bus driver positions remaining, one CNP assistant position, and the part-time custodian, we have an interview set up for that, and we are looking for candidates for the full-time position at the high school. So, any questions, I'd be happy to take those, but continue to make progress, even day by day. So this was, I think, published Friday or Monday, and all rates changed. So, any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Board, any questions?
Mr. Gallagher, my only question, you, you rolled through a whole bunch that had been filled.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the, the professional positions, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that are listed up there. How many are open now?
Three remaining.
Three remaining, okay. And the classified positions?
So, we have, we actually have three, an instructional assistant rather than two, and that's only because one IA moved in to fill a health assistant position, opening that up. So that was, that was due to a promotional transfer. One health assistant, and that actually is at Ealen right now. And the remain, the rest of those remain accurate.
Okay, cool. Good work. Thank you.
All right, if there aren't any questions, the next thing on the agenda, I do believe you have in front of you is the new teacher orientation calendar that we have provided for you, the agenda for that week. As you're aware, the new teacher orientation, which I love that week, that's a wonderful week to bring all of our new teachers in to the fold and grow them and develop them and get to know them. July 28th through August 1st, and some of the dates that I'd like you to be aware of, that first day, and this is going to be at Amherst County High School in the Dining Commons, that is still on point to occur, that welcome breakfast on July 28th, we would love you all to be present. Dr. Wells, I'll give a brief introduction and love to introduce you all as well as we get to know our new teacher crew there. The next date of relevance is Tuesday, July 29th, and that's because we have that bus tour now. And that's not something that we, you necessarily have to participate in, but you're also, you are welcome to come to breakfast before we go on that tour. If you missed Monday and want to come, introduce yourself to everybody that day, that'd be fine as well. Thursday, big event, that is our new teacher luncheon, again, over at Sweet Prior Pro Throw. So I encourage you to please make every effort to be available. We will work all the logistics to make sure it's easy to get by the gate on that day and get to, just have a nice opportunity to, to share lunch and meet everybody on that day. Let's see, from there, that's all for new teacher orientation, as far as the relevant dates. As far as our work week, which, you know, begins on August 4th, there are some relevant dates there. You don't have that in front of you because that's going to be finalized, I believe, tomorrow, and we'll start putting that out there. But most relevant to begin with is Tuesday, August 5th, which is convocation, so 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock. And I believe that is at the high school, am I correct on that as well?
It is.
There it is, auditorium for the high school. So, just so you're aware, we would encourage you to please be present for that, obviously, as we welcome everybody back. And then transition day is on the following Tuesday, just for your awareness, as we have those individuals moving up into kindergarten, up into sixth grade, up into ninth grade, have opportunities on that day, and then the first day of school coming around the corner, Wednesday, August 13th. So I just want to make sure you're aware of all the relevant dates, and again, all those dates for the new teacher orientation along with convocation, please do make every effort, if you could, to be there. We'd love to have you, to be introduced to the new teachers and so forth. Any questions, I'll take them.
Board, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I'll turn things over.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I know you have in front of you the information regarding the overall division school breakdown for employee exit survey results. As you can see, we had a greater response this year than we did last year of the 78 exiting employees. We had 37 responders. And just an overall umbrella summary, 78% of the respondents indicated that they would recommend ACPS as a good place to work. This is a drop from last year of about 5%. The top reasons for leaving pretty much stayed where they always are. Personal reasons would be in the largest level of responses, and that includes retirement, spousary location, and family considerations. The second largest responses came for professional reasons, and that might be changing career or job description, responsibilities, and teaching in different school divisions. And then the last highest responses came from learning and climate, which covered things such as discipline, school culture, and workload. One of the biggest factors in the survey regarding what may have encouraged staff to stay came with possibly pay increases, having more time to plan, and fewer discipline problems. In looking at the data, we've already started putting the plan together of how to be responsive to much of this, realizing one particular component missing is higher responses from our classified staff. We only had four indicated on here, which has already told us we have to come up with a different mechanism in connecting with our classified staff members and making sure that their voice is being heard before exiting. I, one big change also with HR is we now oversee the email addresses within our department, so we have more control over when those get cut off to try to give them ample time to respond to the survey before they leave. But we might have to go to some paper mechanisms, face-to-face conversations, to try to make sure we're initiating conversations with them as well. And often, another way in which we're trying to be responsive, one of the higher components that came out of it, even in exit interviews, was streamlining data processes and removing some of the redundancy, and kudos to the instructional department for really trying to take a lead on being responsive in regards to that. I think that's the biggest thing we're trying to pull out of the survey information, is to respond, not just to take the survey information and just sit idly twiddling our hands, but to actually start putting a plan together on what we need to do with it. And also, in our department, something that came out as well was being more cognizant of the support we give to new teachers, not just ones that are coming in straight out of college, but those that might be career switchers, who still might have gaps in going over classroom management, and, you know, how to use their time more effectively in the classroom and with their planning. Their needs are going to be a little bit different than somebody who went through a full program at the college level with student teaching and all that in a different mannerisms. So that's how our department is trying to work in regards to that. And we've kind of aligned some of our goals in regards to mentoring program and onboarding, and also with stay interviews, which I hope to bring that information to you in August or September, of how we're trying to be more responsive to what the data is telling us. So if you have any questions in regard to that, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Board, yes, ma'am?
I just have one. Let me get my mic up. On the discipline part, is it, you know, I know it's hard to tell, but is it more, maybe more work with the newer teachers that have never had this responsibilities, or is it just our kids are, like, running amok? I mean, do we know which one it is? And I'm just curious.
Some of the things that came up, like even in our new teacher forum, I remember one in particular was like senioritis, like when they're getting close to the holidays, trying to keep them engaged, and just knowing those things that really speak to the students that are in front of them. They might be trying certain things, but I think they could learn more. And it even came up today in conversations with leaning on peers and learning from peers that seem to really be doing it well, and trying to put that in the context of their own classroom. How could I use what that teacher's doing, not to be a duplicator or mini-me, but how could I use what's going on in that classroom in the context of my classroom to make the learning environment more conducive for learning and less chaotic? So I don't feel the frustration of things like that.
Yeah, and that's one of the top three. It just speaks out to you.
Right. And that's what you think when you have teachers coming in provisionally licensed, who may not go, they're, they're missing on that component sometimes of classroom management. And we have Kristen Atkins, who goes around and does a phenomenal job supporting teachers with that regard. So we're trying to make them feel comfortable in reaching out to ask for that type of help so we can connect them with the right supports.
Yes, ma'am.
And it kind of piggybacking Ms. Saunders, I would just, what do we, what is, climate control, where is it? Learning climate, school culture and climate, what, what are we talking about?
It could be, what's the feeling you get when you're in the building from your colleagues, from your coworkers, from the classroom atmosphere?
Happiness.
That can be it. You know, sometimes when one person is unhappy, they kind of want to have company with them. And, you know, sometimes that can breed a lot of negativity in the, in the building, just like on the opposite, when everybody's having a good morale and feeling good about what they're doing and high buy-in, there's a different type of joy you carry in, in your classroom or in the building or with your coworkers. So I think that's a piece that has a lot to do with it.
And, and I usually don't look at this as deep as I am this time, but I'm just making a statement. Some months back, someone came with a survey they had done, and we were talking about morale and this, that, and the other. You know, that kind of goes and comes, but I'm just hoping that this year, and I don't know how, and not, and not just here at Amherst, but at every school system, that could be just a good set off. When we speak about lack of support, 40%, I, I don't know, we just spoke tonight of so many people trying to give support to so many people. Where do you find, where do you think that really is? Lack of support from supervising school administrators, 40%?
E.
E.
Ten responses.
You hit four out of the 10.
Yeah, but I mean, what do you think they're, they're talking about here? I mean, I know I've heard that before.
It could be just making sure that they have that relationship with their administrator that they feel like they could come to them and that they're actually going to take some type of action in connecting them with the supports they need. They make the request in, are you reaching out and putting me in contact with somebody at SAO or mentoring the building or a peer? Are you coming to my classroom and being a thought partner with me, working alongside me and partnering with me? So it's just making sure that you don't get caught, so caught up in the managerial types of things of being a school leader. It's just as Mr. Neighbors and everyone was alluding to, being part of an instructional leader, it's also being like an instructional coach and working along with your staff. But you've got to make sure that you're being intentional about that.
And, and I don't, you know, this is everywhere, not everywhere, but I'm talking about Amherst right now, but I'm just hoping that we can use this, as you already said, to develop some things that are going. Now, this, the school policies and procedures, some of those are just fit. I mean, this is what we have to do.
Right.
And it's a bad thing to say, it's our way or the highway. But, I mean, you know, I, I just look at certain things, but we're just hoping.
Some of that falls into that accountability pieces that all schools just have to follow. And not to say that everybody's happy about the processes that you some have to go through, but like we said, some of the processes are being more streamlined this year, so it doesn't feel like it's such a heavy lift across the board with some of the things that teachers are being asked to do.
And then my last one, when I, I looked at this the other night, I mean, just lack of support from parents and community. Well, we have PTL, what's it, not PTA now, we have something.
PTA.
Back-to-school nights and all kind of things where I see teachers talking to, to family members. I'm out there myself having a hot dog. So I don't know if we could look at that. You can't look at everything, but just be mindful of it. And then my last thing, Ms. Terry, is the mentor teachers, back to what we were talking about with support and all these scenarios and, and classroom management, new teachers are given a mentor teacher, am I right?
Yes, they, for two years.
Because they stand up with them. Do you feel that's been, is that working?
I believe it's working very well. We have outstanding mentors within our division, and they set up strategic time throughout the grading period to meet with them weekly, also protected time where they can sit down and do peer observations to support them in their classroom as well. We've heard very good feedback from them. We actually surveyed them in December about how they thought it was going, and they feel like their mentors are really there to support them and they can be a partner with them in what they're doing in the classroom.
Well, that's the intention.
Yeah.
But when someone leaves our, or when someone leaves our, I think I meant the hospital, when somebody leaves our system and says certain things, we, we just want to make sure that all the, the loops have been looped up. It's the mentor teachers, if I come to my mentor and said, I'm frustrated, I don't feel like, the mentor needs to say, wait a minute, let's look at this, so see who you can get to help you before you run off to another county saying this was terrible business here. Because I think we just really this year, among other things, have to pay close attention to retention. And we can't make everybody happy. We're not crazy, you know. Everybody has their own reason for leaving. Now, when I see retirement, I'm not going to argue with those people because I'm ready to do it. But if, if we leave and say, you know, this was a bad place to work, I didn't get any help, nobody liked me, then we need to say, well, what in the world's going on? The best we can. That's all I have to say.
I understand.
Okay.
I was just going to make one comment too, that, and there's a range of respondents, you know, in this too. So when you see like several, you know, a, a number of folks who responded, there are also those that we've kind of worked with and parted ways, and maybe they didn't like the expectations that were set, or, you know, didn't like to be held accountable. And so there, it's a, it's a variety. There's a lot that actually is very meaningful, and there's also some that probably, you know, wasn't a bad thing necessarily. They felt like they weren't supported, but actually, they may have been, but didn't like the expectations that were held. So it's a big broad variety in there. It's a big mix.
Well, I don't think, you know, my comments are not to blame anybody. That's not what I, but I do, I'm out in the community and, and, you know, just like with other people telling, telling their board members something. I do hear sometimes that there are things that were not good, and so I'm leaving. And usually they leave before they tell us, you know, we don't know until they've left. And then after they leave, we hear all this, it's like a jet. All this smoke is behind, and I can't do anything about it, jet's gone. So I'm just saying, if we can head some things out best we can. Can't nobody work miracles about workers. We have responsibilities. But if the mentor teachers can, can jive in and then other people, I believe we might can pull this thing off a little bit.
And, and that's one of the reasons why we're trying to pivot in the fall to continue with the state interviews.
Yeah.
Hitting classified staff, even Mr. Childress you brought up, we should be hitting people who've been with us over 25 years to see what keeps them in the division so that we can tap in on a different way with some of our practices to make sure that we're giving people what they need, when they need it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gallagher, did you say that we have staff members who we mutually parted ways conduct an exit interview?
Everybody that, everybody that leaves the division.
But if we, if we basically told them to leave, we don't need an exit interview, we know why they left because we wanted them to leave, right?
Well, we've done, we've done exit interviews with all, all leavers.
Right.
I mean, whether or not we should or shouldn't.
As you just said a minute ago, it kind of messes with the data, right? Because you get erroneous data because we already told them to leave.
You have to.
I don't think that's a good practice.
It does mean you have to dig into it a little bit and, and know the differences. But, but good, good or bad practice, it's good input to have if you, you know, if you all thought we, we should change that and not provide individuals who are leaving for those reasons an opportunity to speak. We've always given everybody that's a lever that opportunity by practice and not trying to pick and choose. And I don't know if that's good or bad, that's been the standard practice, so.
I, I don't think we should be providing exit interviews to people we've asked to leave.
Though we might want to know how we could have kept them.
We can ask them that question, but I don't think you count it in your data.
I'm just messing with you, man.
Yeah.
Yeah. With exit interviews, I believe it should be for everyone because something led to that person to leave. Now, even though we asked them to leave, whatever the case may be, there's Now, even though we asked them to leave, whatever the case may be, there's a million things, but maybe that particular employee acted a certain way because of something that was going on with them within our division. Yes, we can't satisfy everybody, I get that. But there may be data in there just the same. Now, if he says, or she says that they're leaving because everything's bad, then obviously that data's no good. But if they can pick the one thing that roadblocked them from moving forward or staying with our division, that might be useful. You know, if they just say, you know, I just can't handle policy or I just, I just can't handle the lack of support from staff, then maybe that is useful tool in the data.
In my opinion, that should have been done before we asked them to leave. Like, do you know that information already? Something.
Board, anybody else?
Really quickly, I just want to say thank you. I think this is a very thorough report. I'm real excited about the positive comments that people had about, you know, even though they left, they enjoyed their experience here. That's wonderful news. And I know that when you look at this, you want to dig in to specifics, but a couple of things that I saw was the salary. We all know that we're working on that board. One of the things that I would be interested in knowing is what salary bands did they fall within? That might be giving us information as we're looking at budget in the coming year. The other on the first page was lack of tuition assistance. There was only one person that said that, but I'll be honest, I never thought about that. If that's something that we can do and it doesn't have a huge price tag on it, that might be an additional way. So I think that that was, you know, like, oh, yeah, that was a brainstorm for me. We all know that we've got to work on the discipline and the school culture and the climate, but I was intrigued when we got to E. And there were three bullets there, I'm not going to reiterate them, but all of those we can improve upon, it doesn't have a single dollar tag to it. So I thought that was a good eye-opener as well as F, school policies and procedures. You know, is, on the interview, exit interview, do they have a place that they can put specifics? Maybe they did and you know what they are. I mean, what do you do about it if you don't know what they are?
Right, there is an open-ended space where they can add additional comments and that's the survey. When they do an interview with me, we're sitting there face to face having a conversation, going through things.
And so I just thought they were great. You've already broken it down by school so that, you know, the staff and administration there know what to address. But I just want to say thank you and, you know, as you break it down into specifics, I'm sure that you'll be utilizing that more. But great for us to look at ways to try to retain teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board, anything else? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Dr. Wells, move on.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, next is information from me. So again, as I said earlier, Tuesday and Wednesday, we had our leadership conference. And what we really wanted to focus on was instructional leadership. And as I told the team that we do a good job of collecting data and we have a lot of data and schools have a lot of data, but what I think we've had issues with, especially at the school level, and some of it's our fault, I'll say our fault, my team's fault because some of the stuff we're having them do is time-consuming. And so we had trouble getting from the data collection aspect of it into the action stages, right? So we have all the data, we have it all, we might have a binder this thick, Ruth has spreadsheet to try to fill up a hard drive. But with that information, then what do we do with it? And so we really have to, we really want to have a focus this year of not just collecting the data, but being able to discuss it and then figuring out what are we going to do now that we have it and how are we going to take that to move the needle forward? The issue, and as I told staff, you know, the accountability needle is we're going to move that needle and it's going to require us to really get from just looking at the data to developing action steps based on that, to know how to move us forward. And so, you know, that is our goal, that is what we're going to do. If we do what we expect to do, you'll see that needle move. I think we had a good two days of discussion and teamwork and building on that, the collaborative aspect of it and how we can learn from each other, but also really how the PLC process can be utilized to do this. And I think we have, the PLC process we've been using, we've been using it, but I don't think we've been using it, and I think my team could probably speak to this better than I, but as effectively as we should be. It's been a lot of things. We're not really, we haven't really been focusing where we need to focus. So as we move forward this year, you'll see a change in that and you'll see the focus changing, again, not just on collecting it. We've got to get past just collecting, we have to get into the action steps and what are we going to do? Well, now that we know where we are, how are we going to implement those changes? Whether it's a teacher in the classroom, whether it's a building administrator, whether it's us at central office, we're all focused on that same concept of what are we going to do to move it? We spent a lot of time this past spring talking to building administrators and teachers on what their concerns were and what some of the drawbacks were, so we revamped our processes. And now we're pushing those processes out this fall, so you'll see a lot of change there in that aspect. There's still some non-negotiables, but also, we also need to make sure that we are giving our staff the time to dig into that data and then make decisions off of that and how we're going to move that needle. And that's where we're going to focus this year. So you'll hear us talking more about that, but that was the gist of day one. What is an instructional leader? How do we make sure our building principals and assistant principals are being those instructional leaders in their buildings? And how are they going to, as you said earlier, Ms. Thompson, seeing that time? We can all get distracted. We have so many things going on in the building, you can easily get distracted every day. And if you don't prioritize and say, on Monday, I'm going to spend two hours in classrooms, you'll find enough emergencies going on to not get there. So we're going to, that is a priority. We're going to make sure that our staff or administrators are doing that and they're getting in classrooms, they're observing. Even if they're not officially observing, they're in classrooms knowing what's going on. And then they can have us conversation with teachers as to, this is what I saw, it's not the official observation, but they know we're going to be in classrooms, they know we're going to be out and about, they know we're going to be seeing. So we know what's happening in those classrooms just as much as they do. So it's very important for us and my staff as well. It might not be on the official days with a clipboard in hand, but just getting out there and walking in schools and making sure we know what's going on in the buildings. That's going to be a priority. And so we've taken some of the things where, you know, we always reflect, we always look at lessons learned, and we're going to push those things forward based on where we think we need to be and what we can do to improve instruction across the division. It all comes down to the students. And if we're not focused on the students and improving instruction, then we're missing the game. And so we have to, that has to be our focus and that's where we need to be. And that was the focus, that was our point on Tuesday and Wednesday, to make sure they understand where our focus needs to be. Because if we're not focused on that, we're not going to, we're not going to change and we're not going to get the gains we need to get. So that was a bunch of our leadership conference. We also hit our other aspects of our regular administrative things, we have to hit the new legal aspects and stuff like that. But our goal was to really get folks to focus on instruction and where they need to be and narrowing down some of the paperwork aspects of it to get it more to where they can not spend as much time filling out forms, but spend more time getting ready for instruction and making sure the kids are getting what they need. So I wanted to hit that.
Any questions there? Board, any questions?
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you looking at the PLCs because I know that affects the students and the teachers. I mentioned earlier that I had heard that there were two PLCs a week. Is that still going to be in place or are you reducing the number of requirements? Because to me, a PLC should be a very natural thing where the teachers get together and do their job.
Yes, ma'am.
And do their work because they want to. But are there going to be one or two requirements? I'm hoping that maybe we can pull some of those requirements back from teachers.
Yes, ma'am. And the focus really has been on streamlining, so even thinking about the baseline requirements. We have provided the lowest level threshold. These are the minimal things that we need to touch on. You just said it there, how are we creating a space where teachers can get together, talk about their students, they can make each other better, they can improve their own practices by talking to each other? That's where we really focus that attention. So the administrator-led or the administrator facilitated PLC is one time a week. The other meeting that they have is that common planning time. So we talk about that and the concept of PLC. We've really been trying to drive a mindset component, so it's not just once or twice a week. We are PLC, right? Everything we do is that professional learning community, we're all working together to get better. So trying to change that mindset a little bit as well. The requirement components is just that one time a week with the administrator. The rest of the time, we want them to get together, talk about their students, getting better because they have that time together.
Thank you for that clarity.
Yes, ma'am.
And for the new focus. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Board, anything else?
So important dates coming up. Mr. Gallagher hit a few of these, but I do want to reiterate some. Again, first day for new teachers is the 28th. You're invited to join us for breakfast and say a few words. Breakfast is at eight on the 28th and we'll send you an email with all these reminders about a couple of days out, just to remind you of the dates. So, you know, if you forget a couple of dates here and there. The new teacher lunching again is July 31st, that's at 12:30 at Sweet Brower College in Prothrow. We're doing a Pack the Bus event on August 2nd. That'll be at Walmart Madison Heights. We will have the bus pulled up in front and that'll go from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And so we'll be pushing advertisements on that, but that is on August 2nd. The auditorium grand opening will be that afternoon at 1:00. I would highly encourage all of us to be there so we can do the ribbon cutting and do all that and a few words to be said inside. And then there'll just be an open house for folks toward the facility. Again, that's August 2nd at 1:00, from 1:00 to 5:00, the same afternoon as the Pack the Bus. So we do Pack the Bus in the morning. Pack the Bus starts at 8:00 and goes to 2:00. And then the grand opening is from 1:00 to 5:00. So we'll be down at Pack the Bus in the morning, then we'll come to the high school, change clothes, transition and be ready for the grand opening thing at 1:00. If you speak, as we made, Mr. Terry, you'd be expected to say a couple of words, I think. We'll also talk to the county counterparts, make sure they're there to say a few words as well. And then we'll, you know, go from there and just have it open to the public and we'll have some hot dogs and stuff for people to eat if they so choose and just have a, just a welcoming environment for folks to come in to see the, see the facility. Convocation is August 5th. Again, that is, we'll do tours from 9:00 to 9:45. Folks can walk around and see if, because not everybody's going to be there staff-wise, so they can come in and walk around and see what we have. And then we'll start actual convocation at 10:00. And, you know, we'll have a few words from whichever of you want to speak, I guess, Mr. Terry, whoever else wants to speak. And then I'll say a few words. We'll be using the new auditorium, so everybody will be in there in some comfortable seats. And we'll do lunch after and then they'll go back to their schools that afternoon. So we'll speak from 10:00 to 11:00 roughly and then we'll have them return, eat lunch and they can go back to their schools that afternoon. We're also hosting a division back-to-school event. And this is part of our community schools aspect of it, trying to get folks to come out. So a lot of the supplies we are going to be collecting at the Pack the Bus event on the 2nd. We're going to bring to the high school, unpack, have them sit out. Parents can come in, pick whatever supplies up they need to meet the needs of their kids and they can also tour the building. We'll have folks from Johnson's Health there, we'll have folks from the Health Department and so forth, other community or agencies there to be available for parents if they need resources, additional resources. But we also want to bring them in, give them a chance to, we're using a new building to kind of encourage them to come in, hey, see the new building, but also come get your school supplies, come with some of this stuff at no cost. If you need it, you can come pick it up and take it home, so you have that. So a lot of the materials we're collecting for the Pack the Bus event, we will have available for parents if they so need them to support their families on the 11th at the high school. And that is from 5:00 to 8:00 PM on the 11th. And then again, as we said, the transition date is the 12th and the first day at school is the 13th and then it's wide open. So we have about four weeks to get it all done. So those are the big events coming up. But again, I just want to reiterate the fact that we're, you know, we're really trying to focus on action and getting beyond just the discovery stage, but then get into the action stage. Because if we don't get to that point, we're not going to get where we need to be, we're not going to move the needle. So that's kind of where we're focused and that's what we're going to be doing. And principals have heard the call and they're going to be expected to get there, so, and so is everyone here, so that's where we're going to go. So that's all I have, and any questions?
Board, any questions?
No questions. I'd just like to say thank you so much for all your hard work. I think, having been on the board this is my fourth year, I really resonated with some of the discussion about changes in direction as far as PLC. And I really resonated with the improving of opportunities for teachers to be collaborating together and doing the work they need to be doing in their classroom and learning from each other. And the, making the data, expanding the utility of it for the teachers, how they can implement, how they can benefit from the hard work they're putting in to do that testing. So I just wanted to say I really appreciate what I perceive as listening to your teachers and just, I can't think of the other word, but thank you for what you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to, where are we? Nine.
Public comments.
Nine point O, public comments. So at this point in the meeting, anyone from the audience who would like to approach the board? The podium is yours. Yes, sir.
Jeff Porter, 478 Woody's Lake Road, Madison Heights. I really appreciate the ways that you all work at trying to make every child every day a practical issue. You exhibit that as you ask questions and I appreciate your collective desire to make our schools the best. And I say that to you as a board as well as to you as a school district. When I came up earlier, I was asking about the cell phone tower. And as I heard your questions, they were functional kinds of questions. And one of the questions that I heard, or one of the comments that I heard was that there was going to be some kind of monetary benefit for the school district. I have not heard any kind of dollar figure, so I'm not quite sure how much that is, but I think before the public meeting or at the public meeting, the public needs to know what the financial benefit would be. My hope, when I heard the person from Verizon talk this evening, was not just to relay what was said earlier several months ago, but I thought I had heard some concerns by you as a school board members about health concerns for children. And I didn't hear any of that. I know some people think that the issue of cell phone towers and the medical issues that might result in that are kind of odd or weird, but there are scientific studies that have been done, not only on children, but also on the workers who actually have to put up these towers. I think you as a school board need to know what the scientific evidence is. And I would hope that as you talk with Verizon, that you ask them for their scientific evidence, not just that, oh, we've talked about this and it's perfectly safe, but what evidence are they working on? We've talked about the importance of science-based decisions. I want that same standard applied to this issue of the cell phone tower. I think that it's important, the health, the mental health and physical health of our children. it's important, the health, the mental health and physical health of our children, of the people who work in these buildings, is important. I'd like to hear some response from Verizon, and I'd like to hear your response as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience like to approach the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go into committee reports and individual reports from the board members. So, Ms. Saunders, kick it off, please.
I'd like to be first.
That's right.
Okay. One of the things I really want to thank you, Dr. Wells, if we aren't focusing on students, then why are we really here? And that's, that should be, that's the baseline, right? That's our theme, every child, every day. But I'm also one of the, I'm an Elvis fan, for y'all that don't know. A little less talk, a lot more action, and I like that. That was probably the hardest thing I got, had to get used to when I started working for government, is I'm ready to roll. So, that's, thank you for that. I'm ready to see that, because the data is a lot. Every time I look at it, I'm overwhelmed, but to know what we're going to do with it is important. And one of those things, I know when my kids were in school, they noticed when the principals walked the building. They noticed that, and they felt valued. So, that is so important, and I hope that everyone, all the administrators will remember that. One of the things, I think, is it Ms. Smith? Is that your last name? I will reach out to the rec department and see if they would be, and maybe move some of those camp dates. I can ask, no promises. But if they know that the conflict is there, they may be willing to do that. Thank you all for all the information. Dr. Rose, thank you. I've been asking for those individual schools. I want to see that, I think it all sort of comes together, the retention, the student learning, and then, why people are leaving. So, all of it does tie in together. So, thank you all, and that's it for me.
Mr. Rossi.
Yes, thank you. Well, we got some news tonight. Some of it was kind of what I was expecting. I know we've talked a lot about learning loss from COVID and the struggles that we've had to come back from it. And the four years that I've been here on the board, it's been a constant, we're going to do this, and this is going to, you know, show us improvement. We're going to do that. This is going to show us improvement. So, it's not that we were aware of what was going on. It's not that we weren't aware of where the children were at and the struggles that they face. It's just such a large problem. It's going to take time. It didn't happen, well, it kind of did happen over a year, but it's not something we're going to bounce back from immediately. We knew this. We knew it was going to be a struggle, and we were kind of prepared for the scores that we saw from a meeting last year. I remember moving the bar was kind of what I was told. So, expect them not to be as great as they should be. And I was prepared for that. However, I think that maybe some of the programs we're doing aren't effective enough, and maybe thinking outside of the box and looking at something that's unconventional may work. And I thought of something, and it may be way outside the box, I don't know. But after seeing those exit interviews, it may not be so far out of the box. But I don't know how many in administration has ever sat in front of a room of children and taught. But maybe that ought to be a priority this year. Maybe administration needs to go in, instead of walking the halls, maybe actually stand in front of a class and teach a lesson. Get back to the roots of what brought you all to education, because I'm guessing that most of you probably stood in front of a classroom at some point. And maybe that would be the trigger to show the teachers that you support them. You're willing to do their job. You're not going to ask them to do something you wouldn't be willing to do yourself. And that carries a lot of weight in other business, I guess. I know education is different, but to be able to step into the shoes of the people that you're in charge of, or the people that you're mentoring, makes a difference. Step in those shoes once in a while. Get into those schools other than just observing. Give them a little time to reflect and maybe go in and teach the class for them. I think it would carry a lot of weight, and it might change the mood of the school, I guess. Might change the atmosphere. And talk about cellphone towers. After we see those reports, I really have no reservation about a cellphone tower. However, I will tell you that there was a study done once that smoking wasn't harmful. Even doctors and everybody else said, oh, it was safe, it was safe, it was safe. Less than 5% of all scientific studies are unbiased. So, when you look at scientific studies, be aware of that. I also saw a study that said that Florida should be underwater two years ago, and we'd have no more ice on the polar ice caps. And that hasn't happened yet either. So, when you talk about scientific data, you got to do research on the data, find out where the money's coming from to fund the data. And the bias is everywhere. So, there's a good chance that less than 5% of your studies are unbiased and based in scientific fact. So, there's going to be a study by Verizon, there's going to be a study by somebody else, they're going to conflict, and they're both going to claim that their data is accurate. So, I've also heard that there's more radiation coming from your cellphone in your pocket than you get from living next to a cell tower. Do I know? No. But I do know that everybody carries one, even though the scientific data's been out that it's dangerous. But something that's a little more dangerous, science, scores, math scores, reading scores, to me, that's a little more dangerous. So, we'll have our meeting and let the public decide about a cellphone tower. I think we, as a board, need to be focused in our education of the schools. I mean, sure, a little bit of money would help, you know, the budget, it would definitely help. But is it worth the cost? I don't know. We'll see what the public has to say about that. That's all I have, Mr.?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Justice?
Thank you, sir. So, GovSchool didn't have a board meeting this month. We will in August. Our slots are all filled, and probably the big thing on the agenda for GovSchool this year is finding a new director with Dr. Smith retiring. He's been there for 13-plus years. And so, that's a board's big decision. So, I'm looking forward to all the activities that are happening in our district. I am thankful for the opportunity to have the conversation regarding cell tower, regarding student achievement, regarding exit interviews. And I'm just thankful to be a part of it. And more people come and talk. And the public comment tonight about an individual experience with a student just brought to mind, again, that I think we need to look at our student code of conduct and look at how do we respond to students that aren't doing anything criminal, you know, if you go directly by the code, but are doing things that are destructive to other students' sense of safety. And I'm not certain what that looks like, but I think there needs to be some discussion, because the consistent thing I am hearing from people out there, teachers and parents alike, is that the discipline is an issue. And I would like, I'd like to know that students that are intentionally putting their hands and feet on the bodies of teachers or other students, that there is a consequence there, other than just removing the student that got affected by it. So, thank you very much for listening, and continue to enjoy your summer.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. I would like to also thank Mrs. Smith for coming tonight and for your three points. I'll start with the one that Mrs. Justice just mentioned. Dr. Wells, are you aware of that and in communication with Rove, that incident?
I was not aware.
Okay. Well, Mrs. Smith, I want to encourage you to talk with your school principal and with Dr. Wells over that. I think that it would be important to just communicate over that and the communication of when you were notified. There should be certain policies in place. I'm sure Dr. Wells will help you. The other piece was about the calendar and camps. That was a sort of a new one to me, so thank you for that. And perhaps the administration does coordinate with the camps on summer school, but maybe if it's not been done in the past, it can be done now. I think that's a very good recommendation for summer school. And then, I just want a little clarity on the back-to-school information about the starting day of school. If you don't have internet, are you getting information about the back-to-school? Are we getting it out via a letter in the mail, that kind of thing?
Oh, that will be going out for the next, for this school year from schools here relatively quickly, and then, everything else has been posted. And it should have been part of the end-of-year stuff, let the end-of-year, they sent the information home, the calendar aspects. But it'll be going out to all parents by mail here in the next week or so.
Okay. And I'm sure that'll have a calendar in place as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Then, also want to welcome Mrs. Glaze to her new position. I'm excited about that. And it sounds like she's been really busy with all the activities that she's done to prepare for something like an assistant principal position. Also, would like to say thank you for sort of a realignment or academic focus this year, and moving forward, maybe trying to realign some of our CTE and pathway goals as well, if that's, you know, superintendent and the board's path that they want to go on. But I just want to say welcome. I mean, it's like amazing, the school year just ended, and now, by the time we get ready to meet again, it will be here. So, I guess it's almost like a welcome back and, you know, welcome to the new teachers and all of that. It's here. And I would like to just follow up that, and that cost of the change order for the construction, you know, how are we aligned on where we were financially initially, and where are we now? You know, just to keep some perspective on that. So, thank you for everything you're doing. I appreciate it.
And the next time we meet will be the second day of school.
Yeah. See, I knew it was close right there. So, welcome back, teachers and students.
Ms. Ligon?
Well, I mean, I think this has been a great meeting, very productive. So, I won't prolong it, but I do want to thank everybody for all the information. And maybe I asked a lot of questions. That's just for clarity, because I am excited about getting the numbers up. I've never been too excited with 75, no matter where I've been or where I work. So, we can surpass that. It's okay with me. But we definitely want to get out of the low, low numbers. We, Laurel is very quiet right now. Only thing I got was a amendment to the budget according to what Lynchburg City's doing, to give some raises over there. But Dr. Lewis will be meeting with us again in August, and we will be enjoying ourselves there. Just a question about the funds paused. What effect are we having in Amherst, Dr. Wells, with adult education and so forth?
So, adult education, those funds, we are the fiscal agent for adult education. So, right now, as you know, the federal fiscal year goes through September 30th. So, we're still funded through September 30th. So, hopefully, between now and then, they will find some reconciliation as to how they're going to move forward with that. But as it stands right now, budget-wise, they'll be funded through September 30th. And then, we would have to figure out as a region, because as a regional program, how we move forward. We are meeting Monday as regional superintendents, Region 2000 superintendents, and Mr. Sechow, Dr. Sechow, to kind of discuss that and kind of look at that. One thing that I will propose to the region would be, if the funding does not come through, I would hate not to have that program, because it is very important for our continuing education for our adults that may need a GED or other training, because it's more than just GED, it's other training they do. It would be kind, you know, really working with our local governing bodies, as far as board supervisors and so forth, to see if they could offset some of that cost if it's not there, so we can continue the program. Because right now, it's all either state or federal funds that do this, that support this program. And so, what the state has actually said is that they may, if they don't get federal funds, they don't have a required match. Because if they don't get the federal money, the required match isn't there, so they really don't have to give the matching dollars, because there's no federal funds coming. So, there's some back and forth there. We're waiting for more information on that. We received SUSE memo yesterday, but it just kind of said what was said in the initial conversation, that they've been frozen. And until we hear more on whether it's going to be funded or not, we really won't know. But if it's not funded, I think as a region, as a, as school boards, again, we'll talk about this more on Monday with our, with local superintendents, would be to really work with our business partners and chambers and things of that nature, and really push to get our local elected bodies to see if they can find some funds to offset the deficits.
Well, I'm not going to dwell on, but I think it's very important. Be a great loss to this county, to literacy and to all kind of things, that if we lost that funding. And of course, on the other end of it, the undermath of that, other possible funding pauses and losses eventually will affect the children.
Yes.
So, I look at that pretty, pretty seriously. And then, my last thing is, I just wondered, was summer school a success? I don't need to know the numbers. We got enough numbers here. But do we feel there was a success number-wise?
Summer school?
Uh-huh. Good turnout?
Yes, ma'am. So, we were right around 3:50 for our primary program, and then, Ms. Raliffe at the high school, it's about 150 students coming in in the next few weeks for remediation. So, we're a little on target, maybe even a little bit above. But Dr. McGinnis will be coming back in August and giving a full rundown.
I was just checking into it. How about the lunch program? The pack, I mean, the bus thing, did that work out well, nutrition?
Yeah, they've been feeding.
Kids come out and get their lunch?
That, we've been pushing out to the communities as well. So, it's been, everything I've been hearing is positive.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's good stuff. And once again, as I close, just thank everybody for all the information. I'm looking forward to all the new beginnings. Thank you for my card to get into the football games. Don't forget my pass. Don't forget my parking pass.
August.
That's all I'm concentrating. Don't forget my parking pass. Thank you, Mr. Terry. That's right. That's right. That's right.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Childress?
All right. Well, a lot has been said already tonight about many different things. I'm going to keep mine short and sweet, and that is going to be centered around student achievement. And so, it's directed to you, Mr. Neighbors, and that you have a lot to do over the school year. High expectations. You know, we got a, we saw some success, I think, in the numbers. Obviously, not where any of us would want to be. And so, you know, I really encourage you to look at the data we're collecting, how we're collecting and using the data, and if we're not using it to the benefit of our teachers or to the success of our students, then find another way to do it. Let's stop wasting our teachers' time and allow them to get back in their classrooms and teach. So, beyond that, I will say I am extremely disappointed this year that convocation is on the same date as the convocation for my school division that I work for. So, I will not be able to be here for that. So, I'm very disappointed in that. But I am going to do my best to get here for the 28th. And so, look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So, most of what I had to say has also already been said. Ms. Smith, I hope you get the data that you were looking for, you know, the answers to the questions you have. I know Dr. Wells or anybody will be able to help you with a lot of that. And I encourage people that when things come up like that, be sure and reach out to your principals and administration, because they can handle it really quick at that level. So, just take, take advantage of those, those things. This is the night that I do blow up my wife's calendar with all of the little things on there. She's usually the one who does that. I've done that tonight. I have to admit, I will not be able to be at all of those things, but I do have some of them that I will definitely be attending. As far as the cell tower, yeah, I'll say I'm in favor of a cell tower, as long as it's not a harm to our students. And like Mr. Rossi said, it doesn't matter. I can, I can pull up one webpage, and it'll say it's perfectly fine. I can pull up another one, and it's going to say it's, it'll zap them in a second. So,
So we need to hear from the community. That's why we'll have the meeting. We'll show them how tall it's going to be, we'll give them the data that we got, we let them make educated decisions on their own, and we can go from there. But we need the community's input. Like we've said, we want every child, every day, out there doing their best. So like we were talking about with, with scoring on our students, we don't care whether they're at a 15% or 85%, we want them to be 100. So no matter where we are, we've still got growth we can make. So let's, let's keep pushing forward. We are looking forward to another great school year coming around. It's hard to believe it's here already, but it is. So students, parents, get ready, here it comes. Teachers, get ready, it's got time to start back. So look forward to it. And thank you, Ms. Ligon, for reminding me the football passes are in there.
Yes.
And that's all I got for tonight. So let's see.
I have something to read.
Okay. You go ahead. You read.
In accordance with Section 2.2, just 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, I need a motion from, oh, I need to ask you to go into closed session to discuss superintendent contracts and other personnel matters.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go in closed session and discuss matters.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.